I would like to call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order. It is September 23rd, 2025. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knudsen, Vogelzang, Quinn, Peterson, Goodrich.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Some of-
Moved by Quinn, seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay. Next item, I have a proclamation for National Recovery Month for September 2025 and for October 2025 as National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas Corleville is a growing city of more than 22,000 residents, where the well-being of every person is essential to the strength and future of the community; and whereas substance abuse and misuse and addiction remain pressing challenges in Johnson County, with nearly 300 residents receiving treatment services each year, reminding us of the importance of prevention, recovery, and support networks; and whereas Annabelle Norman Phillips, Number Three, a nonprofit rooted in service and compassion, has made a lasting impact in Corleville by providing group discussions and mentorship opportunities for those seeking guidance through difficult times; and whereas the organization has extended its mission through random acts of kindness, offering food, blankets, coats, and hygiene items to those experiencing homelessness, while also assisting individuals in connecting with vital community resources; and whereas the members of Annabelle Norman Phillips, Number Three embody the values of recovery and prevention by uplifting neighbors in need, strengthening community bonds, and fostering resilience through acts of generosity and encouragement; and whereas the organization's commitment to kindness, recovery, and prevention directly supports the goals of National Recovery Month in September and National Abuse Prevention Month in October, making its work a vital resource in Corleville; and whereas recognizing these months not only affirms the importance of prevention and recovery, but also honors the tireless service of community organizations like Annabelle Norman Phillips, Number Three, whose actions reflect Corleville's spirit of care and unity. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Recovery Month and October 2025 as National Substance Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Corleville, and commend Annabelle Norman Phillips, Number Three, for its outstanding contributions to compassion, prevention, recovery, and community strength. Signed on this 23rd day of September, Megan Foster, Mayor. Now, do we have a representative here from this group that would like to accept this proclamation? Okay. Would you like to step up to the microphone and say a few words?
Thank you. On behalf of our nonprofit, Annabelle Norman Phillips, Number Three, I would like to sincerely thank you for this meaningful proclamation. We are deeply honored and humbled by the recognition. Our mission has always been rooted in service, and this moment reinforces our commitment to continue connecting with our community in impactful ways. Whether it's through a blanket drive to help those in need, supporting our veterans, cleaning our streets, or stepping up whenever we're needed, we are here. We're dedicated to being a reliable resource and a positive force in our neighborhoods. This recognition is not just for us, but for every volunteer, every partner, and community member who stands with us. We proudly serve with compassion, integrity, and a deep love for the people we privilege to support. Thank you for this honor.
Thank you. Do you like to get a photo?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Next up, we have our community comments. Now, most of you have been with us for a community comment, and you know the drill. Go to the microphone, sign in, and I will say that I am going to be timing the comments tonight, just because I do know we have a larger crowd, and I want to make sure that we get through as many folks as we can before we get to the next agenda item, because I know some folks have some questions that they would like to pose during the community comment. So I will be timing, and I know I've been kind of lenient about letting people go over, but I am going to have the sound on my phone, just so you're aware. You'll probably hear it. I wasn't doing that the last time, but like I said, I think we have some folks, a lot of folks that want to talk to us, and I want to make sure we are able to get through as many people as possible. All right. So, who would like to go first?
Would you-
Oh, I'm sorry, two minutes. I apologize. Thank you. Two minutes.
Would you like the list?
Yeah, I'll take the list. Thank you. And this time, I will not take it. I'll not walk off with it. Alrighty.
Which direction should you place the questions for the flock representative?
Oh, just if you just want to say them, like, I'll, and I'm going to try to, I know that Hi is too, I think we're going to try to write them down. And then that way, if he, you know, he'll be able to hear them, and we'll try to bring them back up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good deal. All right, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Ryan Swanka, longtime resident of Corleville and Johnson County, and a candidate for mayor. For months, members of this community have shared with you information and concerns regarding Flock and AI surveillance within our community. Instead of trusting the community, you decided to bring in a sales rep who has every incentive to say exactly what you want to hear to keep this deal alive. This representative has no obligations to our community or to any of us, but you all do. Based on everything I and others have shared, this should be one of the easiest political and ethical decisions you could ever make: cancel the contract. Flock AI surveillance solves none of our problems, and I don't care if the money is forfeit. Cancel the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, Dan Wolers.
Hello. My name is Dan Wolers. I'm a 24-year resident of Corleville. I've come to talk with you again about the Flock surveillance system. This will be my third time speaking with you about the issue. First time-
Yeah, I have the sign-in sheet.
First time I spoke, I asked you to think about the impact of this surveillance system on our right to privacy and to our freedom of movement. I explained how Flock is a private company that is not accountable to open records laws or oversight by elected officials. Second time I spoke, I explained how the information on Flock's own website indicates that these are not just license plate cameras. They also track bumper stickers, window decals, and many other items. I noted how they're expanding to live and stored video. I also noted that we have no guardrails in place to prevent the system from expanding without discussion in the future. With my time tonight, I would like to talk about Flock's terms and conditions. Number 5.3, disclosure of footage. Quote, "Flock may access, use, preserve, and/or disclose of footage to law enforcement authorities, government officials, and/or third parties if legally required to do so, or if Flock has good faith belief that such access, use, preservation, or disclosure is reasonably necessary to comply with a legal process." So no matter what they've tried and will try to sell you today, what I just read is a contract. The rest is lip service. I'm concerned with this disclosure clause and Flock's terms of service. This allows Flock to share footage with federal officials whenever they believe it's reasonably necessary. We've already seen how federal agencies have used surveillance data to target immigrant communities. In fact, that data was captured by the Flock system. You've heard from residents that this Flock system will make them feel safe. You have also heard from a wide range of our community members that they are scared, fearing that they might be part of the next group that gets targeted. Those residents of our town deserve to feel safe, too. I think we can all acknowledge the difference between something being legal or illegal right now is one man and his pen. This broad power to share local surveillance data means vulnerable groups in our community could be singled out without oversight, without limits, and without notice. That risk should make us very cautious about bringing this technology here. Please vote to end the contract. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have Mike Roberts.
Hello. I'm Mike Roberts from Iowa City. I use he/him pronouns, and I would like to cede the balance of my time to the following commenter.
Thank you. My name is Tara McGovern. Thank you, Mike. Let's be candid. Corleville is over $339 million in debt, and we are on the precipice of throwing away an additional $36,000 on a two-year subscription to solve a crime problem that we don't have. I need you to understand that when these cameras go up, you lose control of our privacy data. On August 20th, when we were in the ACLU of Iowa community briefing about the unconstitutionality of Flock, Evanston, Illinois ended their Flock contract because Flock illegally shared Illinois data with federal agencies. Evanston's cameras came down, but yesterday, Flock came through and put them back up again. I have confirmation from Evanston City Manager Luke Stowe that the city did not authorize this reinstallation. Last year, North Liberty City Council voted to add a Flock subscription to their fiscal year budget and allocated the $44,000 by not replacing a retiring officer. This agenda item in North Liberty was accompanied by an 18-page description of Flock. In contrast, Corleville's fiscal year budget had license plate readers as one of seven items listed in a paragraph with no mention of individual costs or how that money should be allocated. The budget item was approved in January, but Corleville Purchasing Policy states that budget approval is not purchase authorization, and City Code Section 30.07 listing the chief's duties doesn't include city contracts. Furthermore, according to Section 17.02, Number 5, titled "Contracts," the council must make and authorize all contracts. But back to North Liberty, their Flock subscription uses 12 ALPR cameras. In this data I'm reviewing from September 15th, 2025, the 12 North Liberty ALPRs scanned 173,968 vehicles in the previous 30 days. There were 680 hotlist hits, representing .4 of all scans. This means that 99.6 of the data that North Liberty Police Department and Flock have captured and stored is of people committing no crimes, just going about their day. If 99.6% of scans are of non-suspects, that is by definition mass surveillance. What is the justification for keeping data on people who have committed no crime? How do you reconcile the idea of freedom of movement in a democratic society with a system that creates a detailed searchable log of where every vehicle has been? Despite the public not knowing that the contract had been signed, Corleville Police Department has been using the Flock data portal since at least August 22nd, regularly searching for photos and videos from more than 88,000 cameras. These are warrantless, suspicionless searches of anyone's long-term location history. But going even farther back, on March 22nd, 2025, Corleville Detective Hannah DeVorek used the Corleville Flock account to search 76,900 cameras from 6,114 agencies. This search happened two months before Chief Nicholson signed the contract, inferring that an earlier agreement was in place. Or either there was an agreement with Flock in place two months before, the only contract the city has produced or unauthorized users are able to access Flock data. You were put in an unfair position when Corleville's Flock contract was signed without your knowledge or consent. Now, we are at a critical juncture. You have an opportunity to be a hero for our community. My spouse and I have raised two children to adulthood, and tried hard to impart to them that sometimes something that is not your fault is still your responsibility. Nobody expects you to make the right decision every time, but the way you respond to an injustice defines you as a person. Here is a moment of definition for you as an elected official, and for three of you as a candidate. Your action or inaction will ultimately define us as a community. I have faith that one of you will make a motion to end this contract, and that a majority of you will vote to release us from this dystopian nightmare before it's too late.
All right, Martha.
Hi, my name is Martha Hampel. I live in Iowa City. I just wanted to say that I'm also opposed of driving through a city that's blanketed with Flock cameras. A lot of the businesses I frequent here, I'm sure I could find an alternative in Iowa City or another city that doesn't have those cameras. Also, someone had mentioned a study that showed .3% of hits on Flock cameras were useful, only .3%. And I'm wondering what other products or services the City of Corleville spends money on that's that useless and harmful? Is this a frequent occurrence?
Thank you. All right, Alexi.
Hello. My name is Alexei Gurtavoy. I live in Iowa City. And you'll hear, you've heard some criticism, and you'll hear a lot more criticism tonight, but I would like, I would actually like to congratulate you on the outstanding job that you've done on this issue. You know, I lived here for 25 years, and I can tell you that I've never seen this low of grass incompetence that the city is showing in handling this issue in those 25 years. And I've seen a lot. And this, you know, this, not only the city council, but the city as a whole, from the police chief to the city administrator, to the city attorney, to the individual council member, this is just astonishing. Like, you know, it's, so first, you let your police chief to sign a contract in a direct violation of the city policy that says he has no authority to sign the contract on the city behalf. And also, in a direct violation of the Iowa code that explicitly says that the only binding contract, the only contract that the city can enter should be authorized, explicitly authorized by the city council. So that is done by the police chief, whether it's willful or, you know, ignorance. The city administrator signs off on it. I assume the city attorney reviewed the contract, you know, when, before it was signed. So we have three parties, you know, completely incompetent. I don't know how they can sit here and not burn through their seats and, just, you should not be serving the public. And then, when this matter is brought to the attention of the city council, the city council ignores it. It doesn't, they don't even look up the contract. The member of the public brings the contract to the city council, and that's how they get their hands on it. And then they proceed, you know, to this agenda, laughable agenda that has, the only item on the agenda tonight is a resolution about, you know, camera policies. We are talking about unlawful, void before-law contract that the city has illegally signed, and now you're, you know, about to spend money on it. Well, I'll tell you what, there is a phrase for it in Iowa law, and the phrase is "official misconduct," and it's a criminal offense. And you are going to be criminally liable if you proceed with this. And what are we talking about here? We're not talking about, you know, trash removal. We are talking about mass surveillance. You know, we are talking about an issue that's right now under review in the district court of appeal, you know, that has passed it to a higher court because it ruled that there is a ground, there is a ground that this constitutes a Fourth Amendment violation, and the city of Norfolk is getting sued for this. And this is under consideration when you're sitting here and acting as if this is just a regular, you know, business. Shame on you. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Hotson-Piller. Thank you to everyone who has come forward to voice your concerns and share information about the Flock cameras. I don't want marginalized groups to be disproportionately harmed by this technology. I'm running for city council, and part of my purpose is to build trust between the Corleville Police Department and the community. I've spoken with Chief Nicholson, and he has explained how this technology can help him do his job better and keep us safe, and he has also acknowledged the community's fears about the surveillance. My understanding is that the contract with Flock has already been signed. In order to compromise, policies have been drafted regarding the use of the automated license plate readers. I'm hoping these policies hold the Corleville Police Department accountable for who has access to the data. I'm also expecting transparency regarding how the data is used. I've knocked on a lot of doors. Some residents don't think the cameras are a big deal, and others are vehemently opposed to them. My hope is that this technology, if it will be utilized, is utilized appropriately, and that we can continue engaging in productive conversations when controversial issues like this come up again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Katie Freeman.
My name is Katie Freeman. I am a Corleville resident and candidate for city council. As you all know well, campaigning means talking to lots and lots of your neighbors and residents throughout the city. I have enjoyed getting in deep conversations with many folks. Though each conversation varies slightly on the overall topic, each one has started the same, with some version of, "What's up with these Flock cameras?" 80% of them have been opposed to the cameras. When I encouraged them to reach out to the city council with their questions and concerns, they all answered with some version of, "Why bother? They won't listen anyway." I found this disheartening, and I hope you all feel the same. I also found it surprising because of the demographic sharing these concerns. All of them were white, heterosexual, and over the age of 65. So people who would be peers with you, Councilor Vogelzang, and you, Councilor Goodrich, based on public comment numbers since July of this year, 82% of commenters have been opposed, along with 80% of those I have talked with individually. I think that the people of Corleville have said pretty definitively and loudly that we want you to cancel the contract and no Flock cameras in our city. As elected officials, your position is given by the people to represent their wishes. A number of you are up for election this November. Now more than ever, it should be clear to you what the voice of the people are calling for. Please end this contract. Thank you.
My name is Fenek Kony. I've lived in Corleville for the last decade. Everyone else here has had the facts. You have all had the time and access to resources to see the same facts that have all of us terrified for why you have not already canceled this contract. So I'm going to focus instead on human reactions. I asked before this meeting started if the representative from Flock was going to be present during the speaking portion of this. And instead of me being told the truth, which is, "No," or, "I don't know," I was told, "Yeah, I'll make sure they're here." That lie, it would have cost nothing to tell the truth. Flock has a lot more than nothing to gain for lying. Why should we trust a company that is already untrustworthy, that doesn't bother to sit here to listen to the people that are bothered by the potential of their presence? Why should we trust that they would keep to any terms you might try to renegotiate for this contract that never should have been signed? There is absolutely no reason we should trust anything in that contract, anything from that company, and anything from anyone who decides to continue their support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go on, is the Flock representative in the room?
Yes.
Okay, he is, he's in the back there. So he is in here. So he, I just wanted to make sure that, that he was in here, so he could hear all this. So, yes, thank you.
Did I ask if, where did the direct question-
I, yeah, that might have been my bad. I apologize. I apologize. But he is in here, so he is, he is being able to, he is listening in. All right, let me get my timer set again. All right, Molly.
Hello. I'm Molly Enixton. I am a resident of over 10 years, but tonight I will be talking on behalf of another resident who could not make it. In regards to the ALPR policy that you have steamrolled in this meeting's agenda, I have the following questions and comments. Regarding 427-4B, reasonable suspicion or probable cause is not required before using an ALPR. Why not? 427-4, Section E, no ALPR operator may access confidential department state or federal data unless authorized to do so. Having this in our city's policy does nothing to regulate who can have access to Corleville's data from outside the city of Corleville. Section 427-4G, all searches must include a valid case number or call for service number and a detailed reason in the reason field. After pulling the public research audit from Corleville PD's Flock's transparency, Flock's safety transparency portal, and every entry in the reason field contains a maximum of two words, here's a list of the detailed reasons listed in that column. Investigation, missing person, missing person, missing person, investigation, investigation, threats, assault, assault, arrest warrant, theft, theft, assault, arrest warrant, assault, 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 identity theft, and stolen vehicle. Where is our threshold for detail? Clearly, whoever is accessing the data at this moment is not in the practice of providing much detail when explaining the purposes of their searches. Section 427-4, Section H, only sworn officers who are certified access to NCIC information have been trained in the proper operational procedures, and interpretation of information from the ALPR system shall be granted access to the system. Again, this regulates the conduct of our own police department, but does nothing outside to regulate outside access of our data. Section 427-5, data will be transferred from vehicles to the designated storage in accordance with the department procedures. Vehicles? I thought the plan was to install stationary cameras at fixed locations. Section 427-7, releasing ALPR data. This section frankly doesn't make a lot of sense in general. There's talk of written requests, approval by the investigations division's commander, not sure who that is exactly. The data is uploaded in real time to a searchable Flock database. Is Corleville planning to not allow any external organizations' access to our ALPR outside of a formal request procedure outlined? I don't think this is the intended use of the Flock system. As I know you'll be hearing from a Flock representative tonight, I want to remind you all of this. This person's draw- This person's job is to sell you a product and a service. They want us to buy a subscription for their cameras in a data portal. They want us to upload data to their servers and for us to pay for them to manage that data. They are incentivized to exaggerate the benefits of their product and to downplay privacy concerned. What we're considering now is a two-year contract and a handful of cameras. If we move forward with this, will it be the end of it? Or will we move on to the drone-mounted ALPRs that are patrolling the skies already? That's not a joke. I think continuing down this path would be a mistake, and I know a few of you would agree. Please listen to your constituents.
Liberty is next.
Hello, I did not really want to speak tonight. I do not do any cameras or anything. I do not take photographs in my life. I love being in Correville and spending money here. The restaurants are fabulous. I live way over in Williamsburg. There are so many privacy concerns with this, and it clearly violates the Fourth Amendment. I can read it to you in English or Spanish if you'd like. I carry it on me at all times. Our founders warned about this. They're really smart people, so please read the Fourth Amendment for yourselves. You got to list the specifics. This is mass surveillance, it's clear. The cost, costs money. I don't live here, I'm not paying for it, but it costs you all money. It opens the city to lawsuits, profiling, wrongful arrest, stalking, data breaches. Who has access to this? I don't know, but I'm being filmed by this. Anytime I come in, I put the visor down on my, on my, in my car. Okay. Boulder had, had a lawsuit with this. Ninety agencies, they thought, had access to this. Turned out it was actually 6,000. There's no substantial evidence that it effectively prevents crime. No independent research, only your company lists it. You know, we can believe them, or we can say, hey, this is actually not helpful, and it costs us a bunch of money. Like she said, .3%, so that's .003, hits actually might turn into useful lead. We are a constitutional republic here in the United States. If you want to repeal the Fourth Amendment, then you got to go a little higher than Correville, city council. So repeal the Fourth Amendment if you want to surveil me and see exactly where... If I lived here, you know when I'm taking my kids to school. Oh, maybe somebody was sick for four days, and you're like, hey, do you have a doctor's note for that? No, like you don't get to know where I am going and where, what I'm doing and who I'm doing business with or whose house I'm at. This is ridiculous. We need to discontinue this, this contract. I'm a California refugee. I'm so grateful to be in the wonderful state of Iowa. We are a lot more free here than there. During COVID, we had lockdowns out there. Oh, I made wine for 15 years. I'm an essential worker because Gavin Newsom owns three wineries in Napa County. So I can go to work, but you know what? If I wasn't, if I was like cleaning houses or I was doing something else, then maybe I would be in trouble for going to work and driving my car around. Like, look at how this could be used. And I'm, I, I do support the blue. I'm happy we have police officers and we have rule of law here in Iowa. But you know what? There are some bad people in any sort of business, and police officers have access to this. What if they want to do something funky and like stalk an ex? Or get access to their children? Maybe they think they should have more access to their children. Things like this, just in general. This is clearly a violation of the Fourth Amendment, and there's a reason that our founders put the Bill of Rights into, into the law and the big foundation of this country. They were really smart people, and we are throwing it all away. We all have individual rights. We are not a democracy, guys, and that's... I'm a libertarian, but we're not a democracy. That's two wolves and a sheep voting on what's for dinner. We have the Bill of Rights, and we all have rights, not as groups, as individuals. You do not get to mass surveil us. You need to have a specific thing that you're searching for. You don't get to watch my car. You don't get to look at my bumper stickers, because I got a lot to say.
Thank you. Please don't do this. Thank you. Okay, next we have Luke Ferguson.
Hi, my name is Luke Ferguson. I've lived here for 35 years. My pronouns are he/him. And first, I want to thank everyone for being here to voice your opinion. The community is really important, and none of us want crime. And I think if we want to follow data, one of the best ways to lower crime is community. So just us coming together, that's really important. So definitely, like, let's all thank ourselves for being here, and thank you all for being here too. And with community, I mean, third spaces, nonprofits, we have a lot of those, and they're doing great things, and they cost a whole lot less money than this. So I mean, we could get involved in those ways, that's great. But I think if we ask ourselves, is a for-profit company right? You know, a company valued at $7.5 billion, is that the right move? Like, I don't think so. You know, they say that our data is ours alone, but if you look at the contract, there's a thing called aggregated data. And that's pretty much just, I'm not in IT, but it's pretty much grouped data. And that's really not our data to be held. They can share that however they want, and it's not hard to then process that data and find out who's who, who's doing what, you know? And they're also partnering potentially with companies like Palantir, which I could have a lot to say on, but we'll try to stay on topic. They also have something called FlockNova coming out that could be potentially trained from like data breaches and things, which they've backed off from. But yeah, it's essentially going to be like a person-to-car, you know, totally integrated. So when you search for a car, you can have a person profile popped up from all sorts of data brokers from all over. It's one of the reasons they're valued at $7.5 billion. And as I said, you know, a few weeks ago, we have deputized ICE agents hurting our community. And they might not be here yet, but they are in America. And our own police chief, Kyle Nicholson, said that we would have to share our data with anyone presenting a subpoena. So all it would take is a couple bad apples saying, hey, we want a list of all of these people's vehicles. We want to know where they are, where they're going, where they work, what they do. When I've traveled, you know, around the world getting to play music and living out my dreams, I've met people who knew Iowa because of human trafficking, because they know of people who are trafficked in meat plants, in other things. It would make them incredibly less safe, and everyone less safe if there is a data agency, like a, a, a whole website just built on being able to track people wherever they go. Because when those people try to escape, it's very harmful. So I know it's being sold to us as a way to help protect people and keep them safe, but it is also able to do the exact opposite. So I thank you all for your time, but I highly recommend that we do not do this.
Thank you. I think the next, I believe it's Ast, it looks like Astor's? Or Astor? Oh, yeah, there we go.
Hi, I'm Astor. I've lived in Correville for the last decade. I'm an odd-hours tech for a local educational software company, and we process a degree of personal information about thousands of students for a large number of American universities. We store that information on a physical server we own, in a building we own, in a locked room. There are six people in our company who have access to that room and are able to access that server. And any of the other dozens of people who need to interact with that server to do their job have to go through that group of six people to interact with that data. I think you should ask the Flock representative, how many people in their company have physical access to the data that's stored? How many people who don't work for their company have physical access to your data? Flock cameras are going to harm everybody in our community, but they're going to target trans people and immigrants. I really hope that you don't install them. As a trans person myself and as someone who cares about a lot of trans people in the community, I've lived in Correville for the last decade. If I pass one of these cameras on my way home from work, I'm not going to live here for another decade. Thank you.
Thank you. Kiana. All right. You can, do you, yeah, take your time, we'll wait. Do you need any help? Yeah, yeah, how about that? Let's do that. Let's bring you the microphone.
Okay.
Yep, good idea.
I'm a nuisance, being a disabled person here. So I just wanted to provide you all with a face of a minority that has already been impacted by a racial-profiled stop by the police. And, and I live here in Correville, so my name's Kiana Top. I live here in Correville. I'm disabled at this point, but I want you to know who I am. I used to be a preschool teacher and a kindergarten teacher. I have two master's degrees. I was working towards my PhD, so you should be calling me Dr. Top, but not yet. I had a stroke, another stroke, so I've had to put that off. And I want you to know that I have been racially profiled. I have been pulled over by the police. They claimed it was because nobody was speeding. They claimed it was because I, I did not have my driver's license because of the fact that I am disabled. I'd had strokes, so I did not have a, a driver's license at the time. So my daughter, who was a minor, was driving the car. She was, had a license, of course. And we were, a police officer passed us on the interstate. So it wasn't here in Correville, but they passed us on the interstate. Were out of our view. They slowed down in the fast lane to get behind us. We were not speeding at all, to get behind us and pull us over. And their reason was because we had too dark of tint by like a tenth of a percent or something, like a few percentage points on our front driver's windows because the car was new to us, bought from Florida. So we hadn't had time to change that yet. And they took my daughter out of the car, who was a minor, and she was driving, to get her away from me, and he put her in the police car. So I want you to see, highly educated woman right here, had some disadvantages, some strokes, going in for kidney surgery in two weeks. And, and this still happened to me. And I, you know, come from a well-to-do family, and not, not that that matters, but you, if you guys, for some of the people, it feels like that, that, oh, if you're doing well and you're not doing anything against the law and you're from a good family, this is not going to impact you. It impacted me. It will impact my daughters going forward because there's another chance that I may not be driving in the future. One of my daughters has my car that's in my name. I have two cars, one of them is, and she has one of them in my name, and she's a black woman, driving by herself. So I just want you to see me. I want you to realize it impacts real people. It doesn't just impact, you know, those, you know, those people, whoever those people are to you. It impacts your real people here. And then I just had a couple quick questions, if you could write them down, maybe.
Of course, of course. Actually, do you want to give them to me?
Uh, I'll rewrite them for you. But can I just say what they are real quick?
Absolutely, you bet, you bet.
What happens as laws change? As we've already seen, the Supreme Court has said it's okay to profile people since the last meeting that we had, that I was here a month ago. It's okay to, so I can be profiled. Now it's not illegal for them to profile me like they did on that one stop. And who is in charge of the audits? The, the station said they were going to self... Sorry, my stutter. A little nervous. They were going to self-audit? Well, what, what are the repercussions of those self-audits? You know, like, does somebody get fired if they misuse it? Do they, we not know about it if they misuse it? What are the repercussions? And what if, yeah, and what if just an overall audit is failed? So they don't, like, what happens then? And like, what kind of, what, what power do you have as a city council? I guess I should ask, if that's a case for you guys to think about. And what happens if leadership changes? So yeah, let's say I trust the, oh, crimin, my words have disappeared, that... Who's, what, the person, no, no, the person in charge of the police station? Chief, thank you. Sorry, I'm so sorry. Uh, stroke. What, let's say I trust the police chief, police, chief of police now. What happens when we get a new chief of police? Do we trust that person? What rolls over? You know, what powers do they have? What happens when, you know, say the dynamic up here changes? What happens to us then because Flock's already in place? And what if there's pressure from higher, from a higher authority over the stations, like federal pressure, ICE pressure? You know, what happens then to that information? And can the contract be sold by Flock? Say they, say, let's say they fail and they go under. And then, but we've seen that, like the DNA sites, they've sold off all of that information to other people. So what happens if they go under? Or just decide that they find a better deal and they can sell for billions of dollars, all of our information? So that's it, I just had those main questions, and, and I just wanted you to see my face.
Okay, next we have Jada.
Hi, my name's Jada Wilson, and I'm a semi-recent University of Iowa graduate. This is my first time here, so if you've heard these before, you're going to hear them again, I guess. But I think at minimum, Flock's website is exaggerating their constitutionality. They cite pretty vague Ninth and Eleventh Circuit decisions to suggest that their ALPR programs are constitutional. And I'm going to guess that by Ninth Circuit, they mean Yang versus USA. And in that case, Yang was driving a stolen rental car, and they used ALPR to get the car. So it was not his property, and it was, it was stolen. So they were working with the rental car insurance company to locate it. So I just say this to suggest that their site and, their site and maybe the rep is overstating the constitutionality of it right now. And our city may be at risk of losing taxpayer money in lawsuits, given that it's definitely still a gray area at minimum. And now I'm kind of going to go a little bit more local, and I would say that we can go ahead with these regulations that I'm going to propose, but they haven't worked elsewhere. In California, Senate Bill 34 prohibits data sharing with non-local law enforcement. But several searches in Flock databases were labeled ICE, CBP, or HSI. In Kansas, a police chief used Flock cameras 228 times over four months to track his ex-girlfriend. And then we have the Illinois example that somebody brought up earlier. I don't believe the potential for lawsuits, violations of privacy, or the capacity for misuse is worth it, because that capacity exists even with rules and regulations in place. So I strongly urge the council to end the contract with Flock. Listen to your constituents, or I fear we will fall down a slippery slope into private mass surveillance. Thanks.
Thank you. Next we have Mary. Oh, whoops, that was the timer. Mary.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, okay. I don't have anything printed, and you know how I am when I speak publicly. So I'm just going to put things out there. I was a democratic socialist until I met the democratic socialists in Iowa City. And I thought, oh, for somebody who's been tear-gassed and mustard-gassed protesting in the '60s, I come from a very different world. I come from the world of people who take chances, people who are surveilled, people who are victims, people who have been saved by surveillance. So my perspective is going to be different. I do understand, I have an immigrant sister-in-law who is going to have to self-deport because she was genetically mutilated. And she fled here as a child. They were going to send her to a place where genital mutilation for women is acceptable. So she's going to self-deport. I understand the concerns people have. I will just remind everyone that when you're talking about policing, you're talking about the smallest minority in every single town, wherever they are. There's a handful of people willing to try to keep the peace. That's it. Most people don't want that job anymore. They want us to just hang on there. And they want to criticize the smallest minority who's out there trying. I have a great deal of confidence in the chief because I'm willing to create relationships within the police department. I think that everybody should do that. I think it shouldn't be a competitive, combative relationship. And I can remember driving Shane up a wall when he said, "You're not going to ask me to break the law. Are you going to say, 'Yeah, but this is really a lousy law.'" Those are the conversations we can have. So I do understand how people feel, but I promise you that there is a good reason for surveillance, too.
All right, thank you. All right. And last but not least, we have Ryan. There we go.
Hi, my name is Ryan Padezwa, and I've lived in Correville for over 15 years. Today, you'll be speaking to a representative from Flock, a salesman who will sell you on their product, a product from a company whose namesake implies that it views American citizens... a product from a company whose namesake implies that it views American citizens as animals. But we are not animals. We are humans with human rights. I don't know the police chief personally. He seems like an honest enough and reasonable guy. But even if he were the perfect man with the best intentions, it still wouldn't matter because the issue with Flock isn't just a Corleville issue. Flock is building a surveillance network across the entire country, a stepping stone for creating a police state. And these aren't just regular surveillance cameras. This is AI-powered technology that will create a national database for tracking all drivers. We're talking big data here. What Cambridge, Analytica, and Facebook did to the internet, Flock will do to our streets. Flock data has already been utilized by ICE earlier this year. They've taken a step back from working with the feds, but who's to say it won't happen again in the future? Within a administration that has shown a complete disregard for what is legal, what would stop a government gone full authoritarian from tracking marginalized groups like immigrants or LGBTQ+, political opponents, or even everyday citizens that just have differing views? The council had mentioned what a good deal we are getting on these surveillance cameras. If a deal is too good to be true, it probably is. Flock is more than happy to install surveillance cameras on the chief because we are the product. Our privacy is for sale. Our freedom is for sale. Do not sell us out. Innocent civilians will be tracked in a way that would normally require a warrant. We are all criminals in Flock's eyes, guilty until proven innocent. But do not forget that you are not here to appease the demands of a dubious company hell-bent on creating a dystopia. You are here to represent the will of the people. And do the people want a police state? Flock, no.
Thank you. Good, good, good way to close out the discussion. All right. So that is who we have signed up for public comment. And now, we will turn our attention to the matter at hand. So, our next agenda item is the discussion with the representatives. So please, come on up. Oh, if you want, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we'll do want, yeah, just go ahead and get settled, and we'll do one more. And, yeah, real quick, but I do want to-
I'm sorry, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
This is my first, uh, my name's Katie.
Oh, yep, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right.
Is this one?
Yeah.
Okay, my name's Katie. I'm a Corleville resident and information professional librarian. Studied a lot about information, data, and how private companies are accessing that, using it, and selling it. It's a, it's a product, it's a good. I live in Corleville on a major street, and I am concerned, honestly, about where the cameras will be placed and if the people who are living in those neighborhoods are aware that there is a camera that will be either possibly have access to their driveway to see if their car is at home. Not like you could go around about and there's a camera, and it can see you go through the roundabout. But what if the camera is anywhere near your house? Lots of people live on major streets where these cameras could be actually close to their home, could see when they're home, when they're not home. I'm just extremely concerned about what else these cameras can do. These cameras are obviously here to do this thing that they're telling you they can do, but that doesn't mean that they can't film and see whatever they want. And I just am really concerned about where they're going to be placed and if the people in the neighborhoods that, where they're going to be, are aware of it. I feel like that's a big invasion of privacy.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, could I get your name again, just so I can-
Oh, Katie, Katie with a K, screen cameras.
Okay, all right. All right.
Hello, my name's Michael Hendricks. I just had two points, I'll make it quick. I think we're being presented with a false dilemma here that we either present, or we either support our law enforcement, or we give away all our data to a company that we clearly don't trust. I mean, it's a false dilemma. We can support our police and not do this, okay? Just before this contract was signed and these cameras were put up, we were supporting our police, and we were all happy with what they were doing. So it's not either-or. And the last thing, a question for the representative. I've heard that there was at least, or around $92 million spent on lobbying in Washington DC by Flock within the last year or two. Can you confirm or deny that figure? And if so, I would like to ask the question, if Flock was not concerned that what they were doing was not constitutional or lawful in this country, why would they spend $100 million on lobbying?
Thank you. Okay. Good enough. Wow. Let's go ahead and get into it. So, Chief, would you like to introduce our guest?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Cameron, excuse me, Cam Simmons from Flock is here to address your questions this evening.
All right. So, I will go ahead and get started. And I will just say, you heard from our community. And there are an awful lot of people that are concerned about this. And I would put myself in that same camp, honestly. This has been a very, very difficult situation for, you know, for me to, I think this is one of the hardest situations I've, we've faced as a council because I do want to support our chief. I do want to support our officers. And I want them to have the tools that they need in order to solve serious crime. And there is, you know, there is clearly some legitimate uses. I mean, there was a shooting that was solved in Marshalltown recently. There have been other instances where these ALPRs have been helpful for law enforcement. And I don't want to minimize that, and I really, really don't want this to be about our local law enforcement because that is not the concern that I have. And I think that there are, I know we've got a lot of opinions about law enforcement in the room. That's totally natural, and, you know, that we have, that's normal for, to have differing opinions on things. But, you know, that's my feeling was that I thought we were getting a tool that our local law enforcement would be able to use to do that. And I share many of the concerns about the fact that I feel like that isn't really what we were getting. I feel like what we're getting is a mass surveillance system, and a buy-in to a mass surveillance system. And I got some serious reservations about that. And, you know, I know that you are, you're here to try to maybe correct some of the, or not necessarily correct, but maybe speak to some of the fears that people have. But, you know, we've had a lot of people, we've gotten a lot of emails saying they're going to try to sell you again. So I want you to know that this is more about hearing directly from you. I was nervous about bringing you in because I, I wasn't sure whether or not the conversation would be in earnest, or whether or not it would just be, again, another sales pitch. But I felt like, given the interest, you know, the, given the questions that some of us had, it would be better to hear from you directly and to do so in full view of the public. And so, I guess, I don't know really where to start with this. I suppose, you know, we've gotten some, a lot of questions from the community. I'll start with that. I had some sent to me earlier today by a constituent. And let me find them. And I suppose I'll just start with the question about, you know, policies. One of the things, you know, we've got policies on the agenda tonight. And one of the questions is, is Flock legally bound to follow any policy that we would put together?
Uh, Mayor, Members of Council, and folks in the room, honestly, well, first, if I might, you know, just start, and then I'll, you know, yeah, carry that back to the specific question that you asked. And it's a good place for us to start. I do maybe like, want to frame the conversation as follows, which is that first and foremost, like, fully hear and appreciate the concerns folks have raised tonight. I know beyond just this, there's been pretty robust discussion. And Mayor, I appreciate you too, you know, just like perspective around coming to get a sales pitch from a company that, you know, folks may or may not trust, and that's in the context of, you know, the media and how other departments use the system and how all this stuff works. So what I'd maybe say is honestly, like, my hope here tonight, and like, how I tend to have these conversations with communities all across the country, and that we do at Flock, is not to sell you on this thing or that thing. Really, the place that I sit in is that I work with city councils and state legislatures and law enforcement departments and communities across the country to help them develop public safety technology programs in a way that reflects their community values, that helps deliver public value, and then is done in concert with really strong policy, which is our perspective for, you know, how this stuff is done best, to carry this back to your question. And so really what I want to do is like, I'm happy to offer my perspective, you know, from that seat. I'm happy to, I'll probably have some context on a number of the specific items around Flock that you all raised tonight that I'm happy to speak to as well. And then, you know, we want to leave this up to you all to decide what's best for your community, which is just how we've approached this, you know, at Flock in general. And we're working with 5,000 communities across the country, you know, some that are very red, some that are very blue, some that are moderate, and that share a lot of different perspectives about just what policing in America means to them and what safety means to their community. So just want to say that, you know, at the outset. And then I'm here as a resource, you know, for you all, and for you as you're, you know, getting questions, what I can do here both now and then in follow-up, extent to which it's helpful, you know, get you responses and background from our perspective. So just wanted to say that at the outset. Do appreciate you all having me. Mayor, to your question about policy, so was, is Flock legally bound to abide by the policies that our law enforcement department sets? In general, we encourage every police department across the country to have a license plate reader policy. Typically, they're going to govern things, like, some of the stuff that we view as really important to this conversation is going to be enshrined in your contract with the city. So it'll be things like limited data retention, like, under what period of time do you want to make sure that if an image is collected, it's deleted from the system? And there's some of those contractual obligations. There are other things that we have just designed, baked into the product. So like, auditability is one of those things. If you run a search on the Flock system, it requires a search reason or a case number, and then that's preserved permanently in an audit trail. That's a thing we've just built inherently into the system. And then there's a lot that your department can do to set policy. So some of those things, for example, can look like good best practice. Is an officer going to make sure that they check an alert and make sure that the plate is accurate before they ever take action on, say, an Amber Alert or a homicide alert that they've received from the system? And those are the kinds of things that are going to get baked into policy. So most often, it's going to govern how your law enforcement department uses Flock. But I wonder if there are specific things in the policy that, you know, would be the kind of thing that we're expected to abide by that might be more granular that I can speak to.
Yeah, well, I think, again, I just, I think, you know, one of the big questions that we have heard is, is, and, you know, we heard it tonight, is that are the policies that we set, are they, I mean, are you able to abide by them? If we were to say we don't want third parties getting a hold of our data, and I know that there's some of that in the contract already that states that we own it, but you have a license to use it, and that's a big question that I have. Is that, is that something we could say, that we want to retain it all ourselves? And we don't want the licensing, or you give you permission to use it? Is that something we could do?
Yes, 100%.
So we can say that? We can say you don't use that? Or like, Flock is not allowed to share our information with anybody else?
That's right. So as far as just like how all this works and what our policy looks like, so I think most folks in the room, you know, have a level of detail. They may know this already. The way that we contract with cities is that we're going to maintain ownership over the hardware system. So, you know, it's a subscription service, as folks have mentioned. You all maintain ownership over the data that's collected by the system. So the only people that make decisions about if it's shared and who it is shared with is your police department. And then there's a number of ways we enable agencies to do that. So it can be, you know, issuing one-to-one sharing requests. So that could be Corleville Police Department issues a sharing request to the county sheriff's office. Both parties have to agree to do that. You could decide that you want to share with agencies within 50 miles, and then if agencies accept those requests, they can do that as well. It could be that you want to just share with agencies in the state of Iowa. That's possible. We also make it so that if you want to share just with agencies in Iowa and, say, Illinois, you can do that as well. So it's all completely customizable. We're not going to share a customer's data without their permission in any circumstance. So that's embedded in our contract. We're also not going to sell that data, and that commitment's enshrined in our contract. So all discretion over who's, over what other law enforcement agencies have access to your data and who you can share with is, that's a decision left up to all of our customers.
Okay. Also, some other, so like the data, here's another one of those questions. So like, does the, all of the data, does it get, all the data that's collected locally get put into the larger network? I mean, that's the other big thing.
Yeah, so this is how-
So it does?
No, sorry, I'm, that was just a proverbial, like, you know, acknowledging your question. This is the way that this works, is that if you, you know, partner with Flock, your data does not automatically get opted into a national network that's available to other agencies. The same way that you can choose, for example, to share just within your state, if you want to do that, is the same way that our national network works. So you can, if you choose to, opt into what we call National lookup. That's the, you know, tool. It's our widest sharing network and can be very effective for things like missing persons cases or, you know, cases where law enforcement have limited information. A suspect has potentially traveled over a very long period of time. And so there's value to that tool, there's public value to it. Not a lot, not all agencies are comfortable sharing at the national level, right? So that decision is explicitly opt-in. Your agency is going to default without any sharing relationships, and then they're going to go through and decide how they want to establish sharing relationships, or if they want to establish sharing relationships. Some law enforcement departments choose to share with nobody, and then they use the tool in the system. All around a balance between, you know, community input, between how much crime do they want to solve? What are the problems that they're experiencing in their jurisdiction? So that's left up completely to the customer. There's no, you know, default opting in to any national database. When you hear a national network at Flock, that's all made up of agencies that have chosen explicitly to opt into that national network. So that's how that works at a high level.
So just to clarify, any policy that we put in place would be, you would, it would be legally binding? It would be legally binding that our policies would supersede your company's policies in a legally binding way?
Your, our company's policy should be aligned with your city's policies. So I will say, just at the outset, that I'm not an attorney, so I want to, you know, emphasize that. And there are like, you know, specific contract language. I know contracts have, you know, come up here a lot tonight that our legal team would be happy to, you know, look at, understanding the spirit of what folks want to put in place. But in general, our commitment to customers, and like, enshrined in the nature of you all owning your data, is that you're going to make decisions over who you share with. And certainly, you know, we're a public, we're a very large company. We're making public statements. You know, you all would have legal recourse if we did not abide by those commitments that we've made in public, just like any other company that you, you know, work with or contract with, in general.
Okay. Does anybody, I've asked some questions. I just want to give other council members a chance to ask questions as well, so. No, I want to open it up. Yeah, go ahead.
Could we have you explain what the cameras take a picture of?
I'm happy to. It's designed to take a photo specifically trained at the back of a vehicle. So our license plate reader program, what we're going to do is actually go through and work with your police department. In this case, it sounds like we've potentially gone through and done that, or there has been some discussion around where- In this case, it sounds like we've potentially gone through and done that, or there has been some discussion around where these are gonna be placed. But we'll install these throughout the jurisdiction in collaboration with a customer or with your city. And then we're gonna train that basically on outbound traffic. So what we're looking for is a, you know, still snapshot of a vehicle passing a camera. It's taking an image of that vehicle. And so most often, what you're seeing is a plate and then, you know, the back-facing car. Uh, what the system does is basically store the best one of those images in the cloud, you know, for a limited period of time per your um, city's retention policy, before it's deleted unless it's associated with an active law enforcement investigation. So a, you know, customer takes action to download it off the system and preserve it as evidence as part of a case file. So, you know, typically, it's trained on the, the backup vehicles.
Yeah, and I know there's been some concern about other identifying factors with, with different vehicles. So things like bumper stickers, things like dents and, and other identifying features that, that folks have, have noted. And is that, I mean, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So you can search on Flock in a few ways. So um, what the image is taking is a still image of the back of that vehicle. Um, typically, it's collecting a plate, but that's not true in all, you know, circumstances. And then there's a series of, you know, we call it a vehicle fingerprint. So there's, you know, make and model, some unique vehicle identifiers, like for example, the presence of a bumper sticker or a roof rack. Um, there's sort of a series of those uh, vehicle identifiers that you can use to also run a search on the system. And so um, at a high level, that's exactly, you know, how that works, is your law enforcement department may get a witness call that says there was a robbery or homicide, you know, they didn't get a plate number, but they did get white Honda with roof rack. Um, and so the law enforcement officer can run a search for that vehicle. And that's at a high level how the uh, functionality of the system works.
So it's not just the license plates? I mean, that, it's, it's not just the license plates? Because that's, hey folks, I, I know, I know. We, we need to keep the conversation up here, okay? I hear ya, I get it. But, I mean, that, that's a, that's a concern that we've heard that from the community, that it's not just the license plates. It is other identifying vehicle features.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's obviously something that I think we need to take into account. What are some other questions from the council members?
So just to verify, if, if we decide to put it in our policy that a third party can audit the way the police use the program? That that's something we can do if we choose to do?
Absolutely. Um, in general, at Flock, again, you know, we're extremely supportive of agencies developing license plate readers uh, in such a way that there's oversight. So we have built, built um, a product mechanism for that to preserve search terms. And then different agencies do that in different ways, you know, sometimes it's the chief or the admin who's responsible for conducting that audit. Sometimes it's city council, some agencies decide to release those audits to the public. Um, and then there are some agencies that have outside parties as well go through and review that. Um, I've seen that done in a lot of different ways.
Yeah, and there were some questions on the, the sheet that I got to that was about the, about the audits, who's in charge of the audits? And uh, let's see, what was the other, there was, uh, what are the safeguards for audits, what happens if an audit fails? That would be up to us.
That's exactly right.
And, yeah, okay.
Yep, we wanna equip you all with all the tools that you need to, you know, establish and govern a program uh, in a way that reflects your policies and your values.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify, so if we were to con- if we were to have the audit done by a third party, that mean that we are paying for that third party to do the audit, correct? So more money spent.
That would be right, yeah. I mean, I, I at least assume so that, you know, yeah, you would contract with a third party.
Other questions from other folks up here?
Can we talk a little bit about um, subpoenas? Um, that could come directly to us, could come to you, could come to other agencies-
Sure.
That we maybe have or have not given access to the system? And, and you know, how that would work with us owning the data if we've given somebody, say we give North Liberty access to it? And they get a subpoena to, to, to pursue, from ICE to pursue an undocumented immigrant or whatever the case may be? We can't stop that, can we?
Um, you can't stop if another law enforcement agency gets subpoenaed to access your own data. So I will say that our policy at Flock is that if we're in receipt of a subpoena, um, that uh, our policy is that we're gonna notify our customer. Uh, we've never received a subpoena from, say, an agency like ICE for purposes of accessing a customer's data. And what we wanna do is notify you and make sure that you have the ability to, you know, defend yourselves if that's the case. I, of course, again, you know, I'm not an attorney, so like can't speak to the circumstances around like what would or would not be legal recourse. Um, I am not aware of any circumstance in which a third party has subpoenaed um, an agency to run searches on another agency's data. I've never seen it happen. They would not have access to your data the way that you all would in the event of a subpoena to be able to like preserve and respond to it. What they, what another agency at any time you establish a sharing relationship can do is just run a search like they would, you know, after you've established access. They can run a search based on a search reason or a case number that they have to have. And then that search is gonna be preserved in your agency's audit trail if it includes your agency's data. So like, that access is permanently baked in to the system. Um, anytime you have the ability to-
If the data that's preserved was from our system, then it would be in there.
That's right. What you would have is you would have a record of an agency running a search for an image on your data. And, you know, I also just can't speak generally to like law enforcement, you know, how this works for other like data systems in general, but um, I'm not aware of that ever happening, and I'm certain that, you know, there's a process in place typically where law enforcement would notify each other that they've been in receipt of a, you know, subpoena relating to another jurisdiction. So that's, that's at a high level. Our position, you know, as it relates to the receipt of subpoenas from any agencies, you know, we're gonna notify customers, it's your data.
What about warrantless searches, is that, that, I mean, would it be possible for us to, I mean, that would be something we could put in our policy? Is that you do need to have a warrant before you utilize that?
Your law enforcement agencies, you certainly could at a policy level. I would defer to, you know, the chief and others at the department.
Okay. So- Anyway, yeah, I hear ya. Any other-
Can I, sorry? Can I just, um, so I want, I wanna walk back a bit? The data collected, is, is Flock holding that data? Does Flock own that data? Or is it the, the city of Corleville, you know, particularly the PD own that data?
The city of Corleville owns that data.
But we don't have a way to store that data, so where does that data go?
Yeah, it's stored in the AWS GovCloud.
So who contract, who, who contract with AWS? And what is AWS, if you don't mind?
Yeah, AWS is Amazon Web Services, um, specifically, it's the GovCloud. And it's, you know, very commonly, you know, used cloud for, I think they have roughly 5,000, you know, different government customers that, you know, store all kinds of different data. Um, you know, as well as sensitive data, so, you know, they're regulated by the federal government. Um, they're regulated under like different uh, cybersecurity standards that they have to go through to host, you know, data for federal agencies, for state agencies, for hospital systems, you know, all that kind of stuff. So it's that same GovCloud that's used for a lot of that data. Um, so really, you can think about us as the custodian of it, and then it's hosted in the cloud, um, it's an AWS GovCloud.
But, but it would be, Flock will have the contract with AWS?
That's right.
But not Corleville?
I don't, I don't know if you all have a contract with AWS.
No, but that, that's what I'm saying, is that we signed a contract, well, let's say if we sign a contract, right, I mean, the contract is already signed. But if we proceed tonight and have the camera installed, data will be collected. But Flock claimed that they don't, they're using AWS to store that data. But we, we don't have a direct contract with AWS, so who have control of that data? If, if, if there's a subpoena, come to the city of Corleville asking to say, okay, we wanna search um, this, this, this car mod- model for, for this person, then what? Don't we contact you? We contact AWS?
You're saying AWS receives a subpoena for Corleville data?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I understand the question. Um, I'm honestly not sure offhand, like what AWS-specific, you know, policies are with respect to like receiving a subpoena. But I'd be happy to look into it and, you know, if we have information.
So my question is, where's the guardrail? Where's the guardrail to make sure that AWS does not um, share that data without the consent of our, of our community member? Right, because, because once, once that system is installed it, whether you consent to it or not, and I'm speaking as, as a person, as a community member, me, just driving to Walmart to get grocery, and I happen to drive by tha- that intersection that have these camera installed it, am I, am I at the time, I am at the time being surveilling without my consent? If I enter into Walmart, I know that Walmart have the same system, it might not be from Flock, it might be from a different um, surveillance, a, a, a different company. But once I enter Walmart, it's a, it's a private company, I consent to it because I chose to go to Walmart. And that therefore I give my consent to Walmart to surveil me because I'm going there to shop. Whereas if I'm driving on the street where the camera is installed it, I, I didn't, I, I didn't sign a consent. So I am being 24/7, anytime I drive to, through that, the photo of my car has been taken. And per the contract, it will be held, pretend for 30 days. What happened after 30 days?
Uh, yeah, so two, if this is helpful, yeah, this is helpful. So like, you know, maybe just to offer my perspective to your point, um, what you'll see, and this has come up here tonight as well, right? It's like, it's, it's expectation of privacy and it's, you know, Fourth Amendment case law, which is really like the root for that concept. Um, overwhelmingly in the United States, uh, courts, I'm gonna see if I'm gonna get this right, two federal courts, I think 13 districts, and five appellate courts have considered the question of our license plate readers without a warrant to violation of the Fourth Amendment, and have ruled overwhelmingly that they, they are not today. The reason for that is because Fourth Amendment case law basically looks at um, how much information's being collected over the whole of a person's movements when they're traveling in public. And license plate readers are, you know, discreet, fixed locations, taking still images of vehicles. Um, so you're getting a snapshot in time, you're not getting a whole um, picture of a person's-
But it's surveillance regardless, correct? Excuse me, can, can you just please, yeah, thank you.
Um, you know, so just to offer that, like to your point about the, you know, nature between public and private, is what case law says is it's basically all about the expectation of privacy when traveling on a public road. And then, you know, understand like the perspectives that vary around what that means and, you know, um, germane to the conversation that we're having tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, to your second question about once the data's being held for 30 days, there's actually an AWS standard that exists for this, for, you know, hard deleting or purging or desanitizing data. So really what happens is an image is collected on Flock, based on a customer's retention schedule, call it 30 days, you know, some customers set more or less than that. Our default recommendation for agencies is 30. Um, it's stored in the cloud, and then on a rolling basis, that data's purged unless it's associated with an active law enforcement investigation. So what your department can do, if it's, um, they get a search or a hot list alert, say an Amber Alert that they want associated with evidence, they can download that file and then store it for, um, as part of their chain of evidence. And if they don't do that, then the data's gonna be deleted in accordance with the, you know, retention schedule, so on day 30, uh, in this case.
Can you guarantee that it will be completely deleted?
I can-
Because you don't, you don't own the data. You contracted AWS to store the data.
Yeah.
It, it, how, how, how can you be sure that AWS will completely purge the data after 30 days?
Um, the reason that I can be sure about it is that there's a, you know, standard that um, AWS has, contracting with, you know, gov- like unrelated to Flock, but governments that hold all sorts of sensitive data, right? There's lots of things that are collected by governments, um, that are all standardized, that, you know, clouds like AWS and Azure have. So like, based on our agreement with Amazon is how we have set this up, such that a customer's data is deleted in accordance with their retention schedule. But um, I also understand that there's a, you know, trust concern there with Flock, like how do we know that, you know, this is gonna happen? And here I am, you know, Cam, saying that this is the case, right? Um, and this is my first time to Corleville, Iowa. Um, so, you know, I fully understand that dynamic. I guess what I can offer is maybe two things, which is that one, you know, again, like we're a company that's making statements, and so there's, like, we have a legal risk in the event, this is a very core policy for Flock, so we've said it for years. If we're not abiding by the retention schedule, or that we've set it up in such a way that, um, you know, it's not happening on the backend, kind of as you described. And the second of which is honestly that, you know, there's a financial incentive for everybody not to store that data. Um, data storage is expensive, so we actually disincentivize customers for storing it longer. Um, we have an extended data retention fee that we charge customers if it's more than 30 days. So it's also just expensive for what it's worth.
And we, oh, sorry, did you have another?
Yeah, I do, sorry, just, just a follow-up. So what is the, what is the longest, the longest retention period? And what is the shortest uh, retention period?
Sure, this is not a Flock customer, but just to give you a sense of the landscape, the longest um, retention schedule for license plate readers that I'm aware of in the country is Los Angeles, which has a five-year retention schedule set in policy. Um, the shortest retention period on Flock today is a seven-day retention period.
So let's say if, 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 if one of your customer go forth and start a camera, and then say, you know what, we, we, we trust our community, we trust our police department, so we, we don't want, we want the retention period to be zero, that's it, right? I guess then what is the use of, of that technology then?
Sure. It's all, you know, your retention schedule is all of balance, you know, in my view, between privacy and efficacy, right? So the longer data is stored, the more useful that is with time to your law enforcement, it helps them solve more crime. The reason I suspect that you see a city like Los Angeles, you know, having a retention schedule that's that, that long, the city of San Francisco has a year, for example, is they're often working, you know, multi-month, in some cases, multi-year, really lengthy, complex cases. It's a larger agency, so it actually takes more time, you know, for a case to get reported and then hit the desk of a detective to the point that they're actually starting to work it. So the longer you preserve that data, there's something there for them to investigate a case. Um, but limited data retention's a privacy control. So, you know, you have fewer days of stored data, it's less information um, over time. And so the reason that our default is 30 is that we've kind of, you know, you see a lot of varying perspectives in this space between, you know, five years and three minutes. We've sort of set a balance where our recommendation is 30 for agencies to be able to preserve a lot, get a lot of the value that you get out of license plate readers, but still preserve privacy. But if a customer adopts a different retention schedule, democratically authorized governing body, state legislature, city council, um, will abide by that retention schedule.
Can you address her, her extreme example of no retention, zero? Uh, and you and I, appreciate you coming, you and I talked earlier about the potential to use it, I guess, for alerts, where we have a missing person, we have an active crime that's occurred, and we have a known plate or vehicle identification, and we wanna know if it's there between now and the next 48 hours or something.
Yeah, certainly.
Do we actually have to store the data to do that?
You would need some level of storage, like it would have to be enough time, really what's happening on an alert system. So if you look at something like an Amber Alert, um, there was a case uh, today where an Amber Alert for a 16-year-old was put out in Boulder, Colorado, that received a Flock alert. So what's happening in that case is that um, the vehicle's passing a Flock camera. Once the Amber Alert goes out, we're integrating directly with that alert system. And so you're basically comparing the plate number and the plate number on the Amber Alert in real time, and then determining if there's a match. So I don't, I don't know enough to know like what the, you know, level of retention is to just facilitate alerts without necessarily facilitating search for investigations. Um, but in theory, you need some, you know, limited period of time in order to run an alert. And today, you know, the lowest example we have on Flock is, is a seven-day retention schedule, just because that's the lowest.
I think you mentioned New Hampshire has a three-second, which has been-
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, which has been supported by the ACLU.
That's right.
Um, that, that would give you enough time to do an Amber Alert type of system, apparently.
It is the lowest retention schedule in the country. I do suspect you can still run alerts only off of a three-minute retention schedule.
If not, it's completely useless.
Yeah, and then, you know, it, it all goes back to just, yeah, how much, you know, you're really preserving the efficacy of the tool and balancing it against privacy. and balancing it against privacy. So I've never seen it play out in practice, you know, at three minutes, but I'm, we're aware of that law, certainly.
Other questions for, uh, for our guest? I guess, you know, one thing I'm curious about, uh, you mentioned a little bit about the lawsuits already. I mean, you know, we've had conversations where, I mean, it's, we, we are well aware that, you know, we've essentially been, been told that if we were to implement this, then, then there's a very strong chance that a lawsuit will be filed. And so, I guess, you know, could you elaborate on that a little bit? In the Evanston, Illinois case as well, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'm happy to, on both counts. On the first one, I mean, you know, this is what I would say, I guess, how I would, you know, think about the question around legal risk, is, you know, again, license plate readers have been well upheld so far in court, and, you know, pretty widely considered as it relates to the Fourth Amendment question, which is the biggest one that we typically see as it relates to, um, legal questions. I'm aware of one, um, pretty active piece of litigation, which is the one you'll typically hear about in Norfolk, Virginia. We expect there to be some, you know, determination in that case, probably in January, February of this year. And we're in 5,000 communities across the country, you know, so it's a pretty low number of Flock customers that we've seen, um, with Fourth Amendment challenges filed. And, you know, then that case is gonna continue to work its way through court, you know, I suspect. So, you know, take that for what it's worth, as far as the, um, legal questions go. Uh, as it relates to Evanston, Illinois, I'm familiar with the contract cancellation. The city council recently voted to cancel a Flock contract over media reports that there was a violation of law, um, in Illinois. We're currently in conversations with the city council, you know, today, to get a better understanding of, like, the actual claims, where they think that Flock had a breach of contract. You know, we haven't gotten that level of detail from them yet, but I'm familiar with the press. The press around the case relates to, um, folks may have seen around Illinois, we recently paused federal pilots with agencies that we had that included Customs and Border Protection and, um, Homeland Security investigations, which we started, you know, at a certain point this year. Those are, uh, law enforcement, uh, agencies who do very complex criminal investigations around fentanyl trafficking and human trafficking. And agencies across the country, you know, decide if or under what circumstances to partner with those agencies. Illinois law, uh, says that, uh, law enforcement in Illinois can't share data with agencies like CBP. We discovered that there were agencies that had accepted one-to-one sharing requests on Flock, which again is, you know, at the discretion of every customer, you can choose who to share data with. So it wasn't Flock, you know, making a decision about whether those agencies were gonna share data, they chose to do so. And as a result of that, we paused our federal pilots for purposes, you know, we care very much about, uh, compliance and wanna help make sure agencies have the tools they need to make decisions to stay in compliance with their local laws. So we did that proactively. Evanston saw that press and, you know, canceled their, um, voted to cancel their contract with Flock as a result. So we're still in discussions, you know, with that community, uh, today.
Yeah, I mean, one of the other big concerns right now is the ability, I mean, right, the fact of the matter is that we are seeing a tremendous amount of abuse of power at, uh, the federal level, that we are, there's a massive amount of, I mean, the data stuff by itself is, you know, that's probably the, you know, one of the most, the concern that I hear most often from the community is, like, the questions that Hi was asking, like, who owns it, who has access to it? And, you know, when, when I hear that any, you know, any type of, you know, you talked about the federal regulations that exist, and I'm like, haha, that's cute. Like, really, I, you know, do we, I, so that, that's a huge concern, is that we're seeing at high levels of government that blasting through regulations, ignoring regulations, changing regulations, we've already seen the federal government getting into god knows what, you know? And, and so, I, that is, I, I, I guess, I, I don't know that there is an answer, that you have an answer to that, that, like, can you, is, I mean, I know there's no guarantee with anything that you try to, you know, with any, any situation, there's never like a 100% guarantee of anything. But that is a big question that I think a lot of the community has, and I think some of the folks up here have, is that what can you do? Is there anything that Flock as a company can do to prevent that? Are you able to stand up and say, no, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna let you get into our system without, you know? So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've, you know, fully understand the concern and just, you know, the context, like, that we're in today, politically. And, you know, I do agree with you, like, with any technology, you know, there's, like, what I can't do here today is guarantee you that there will never be, um, a hack around Flock, right? I can't make that guarantee. What we can do is, uh, everything that we can to mitigate that risk. And so that's how we approach, you know, product development, it's how really every tech company does so, is we can implement best practices, and we can, um, put policies in place such that we mitigate the risk of that occurring. You know, if I was gonna tell you, to the point about, you know, Flock having a sales pitch, if I was gonna tell you something differently than that here tonight, it's a product you probably don't wanna buy, in general. So, as, to your point, that's really exactly what we've tried to do, is set up policies such that every community can use license plate readers and, um, know that they have control and access over their data and who they share it with. And then know that if it's being accessed, you have a log of that information so that you can take action, you can audit your system, and then enshrine that in good policy. It's the best way that we know to mitigate the risk of, you know, technology use and preserve all the public value that, you know, we see these tools, um, being used for every day to solve crime.
That brings up one question.
Go for it.
So on that question, you know, who is liable if there's, is a hack and the data breach leaked? You know, are you guys liable? Is there, is the city of Corleville liable? You know, who, who gets, who is, um, who, who, I guess, would be liable for that, for that lawsuit if there was one? Oh, that was, came into place because of a hack or leaked data?
Sure. I, I don't, you know, I can't speak to particulars, like, I'm sure it would depend on the circumstance around, you know, who is at fault, like, from what happened, you know, all of those things I'm sure would go into, like, the answer around liability specifically. What I can say is that we have, you know, to our knowledge, never experienced a cybersecurity, um, event from a malicious actor today. And, you know, we take, um, every step that we can to, um, implement good cyber hygiene and best practices. So all the things you would wanna see of, you know, company handling sensitive data, having a SOC 2 Type 2, and there's a series of standards, ISO 27001, um, we, there's NIST frameworks that we abide by, those are all the same practices we put in place at Flock, um, to prevent those kinds of incidents.
So there, so the question is, what did our contract change, why did our contract change from zero to 30-day retention and when?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I would have to defer to the city.
Yeah, that, I've, I've seen that, um, and I, that, and I think that's, uh, maybe a question for the, the next part. But Chief, if you wanna address it right now, go for it. Oh, okay.
And just like a typo in the-
Okay, I got one more question. Has Flock ever ended a contract because of misuse, and if so, why and what happened?
I am not aware of a case where we have done that. I am aware of, uh, the, you know, the case that typically gets brought up, like, one real, like, prominent, uh, public, uh, example of misuse at Flock, which is a case out of Kansas, I can't remember if it was referenced here tonight, where a law enforcement officer was using the system and, um, was running searches related, for not, for a law enforcement purpose. And I don't remember offhand if it was for an ex or an active girlfriend or a romantic partner of some kind. And in that case, um, the searches that were run were preserved in an agency's audit log. So the agency ran an audit and found those searches. He was fired and criminally prosecuted in that case. So, you know, those are exactly the kind of controls that we put in place to mitigate abuse. And, you know, then the circumstances also vary around, you know, sometimes a search reason is more vague than an agency's policy, you know, says that it should be. That can be the kind of thing where you wanna retrain your officer. Sometimes there are really serious cases of, um, misuse, and like in any other circumstance, you know, there's, your department's gonna have a policy around how they handle those, uh, case by case.
Those are human elements involved, not technology elements, correct?
Certainly.
Um, other questions?
One more, it just came up. Uh, is the data encrypted, and how, if, and so how and by who?
Um, yes, it's encrypted, um, it's encrypted at rest, which means when it's actually, um, the image is taken and it's stored on the camera, it's encrypted at transit, and when it's stored, all also governed, you know, um, by, uh, best cybersecurity practices. There's, there's similarly an Amazon WS standard for that encryption level, uh, which is what we use at Flock.
That's it, one question.
You have one? Yeah, so, I think, past meeting, um, and, and please correct me if I'm, if I'm incorrect here, Chief, that the Corleville PD have used, have, have, have had asked for access to this data system before. And this is, this is before we even have the camera. So if we already have, you know, a way to use the, like, the tool, without having the tool right here, why, why, why bring the tool in now?
Sure. Uh, another thing I would, I would, you know, defer to the department around sort of like, um, priorities, you know, for the city, around crime and how they wanna use the cameras. In general, at Flock, customers do have an option to purchase software access as opposed to actually purchasing hardware, so that is available to customers. And then, you know, obviously, the added benefit of having hardware inside the jurisdiction is to be able to help solve crime in your own community. So, you know, these things are only as good as where they're placed. And so extent to which that there's a priority crime, you know, that you're looking to solve in Corleville, that's what your cameras installed in your jurisdiction are gonna help you with. And then there's the opportunity to, you know, collaborate regionally for, um, cross-jurisdictional cases.
So if, so if, so if Corleville PD can ask to get access to those information from other community that have this tool, who, who to say that, you know, there's not an abuse of, of these data by someone else's? How, how can we guarantee that these tool will be used for legitimate reason only? And it's not to be used to harm someone, it's not to be used to, you know, racial profiling somebody, it's not to be used because you have a beef with someone? Like, how, how, can Flock guarantee that?
How to prevent against misuse of the system? So, two things about what you just referenced. All of the same controls that we put in place is how we think about risk mitigation. So, you know, it is a technology, right? What we try to do is help design the product such that it's fundamentally transparent. That's the reason that, you know, search reasons are required or a case number, and then that searches are preserved in an audit trail. It's to have an oversight mechanism to prevent abuse. And then enshrined in good policy, um, an audit trail might exist, but, uh, if an agency isn't checking their audit log, then you're not gonna get the value out of that oversight, right? So then that's what comes with policy, is how often does your law enforcement department actually go through and conduct an audit of your system? And then, you know, those are the kinds of controls that you can put in place, both like us on the product side for how we've designed it, and then, um, the policies that you put in place, which typically, you know, say things like ensuring that they're being run for active law enforcement investigations. But then again, you have a check, you know, to be sure, um, that that's the case, and that you can take control over your own data in the case that you need recourse. So, if there's an officer that runs a search, and the search reason says, you know, stolen vehicle, you want a case number associated with that, so that you can actually go through and audit it, like, say stolen vehicle isn't enough information for you to be comfortable, you can terminate your sharing relationship with that agency at any time. So you always have control and discretion over what those sharing relationships look like and oversight for your system. So that's, you know, in general, mechanisms available to prevent against misuse.
So, uh, I have another question here, you know, uh, talking about access. And can you talk a little bit about what the requirements are for someone to obtain a user ID and a password? And do, are law credent- law enforcement credentials required for that?
Um, yes, they are. So it's a sworn law enforcement officer for purposes of accessing our law enforcement network. We do have, for example, other private customers, so we partner with, you know, churches and hospitals and, you know, schools, for example. Those kinds of entities can choose to share data with your law enforcement department, but not vice versa. So private entities can't access law enforcement data. And both parties in any case, whether it's law enforcement to law enforcement, or if a private customer's choosing to share a camera with your law enforcement department, both parties have to agree to share that data. Same principle's true, is you can terminate those sharing relationships at any time, and the system's fully auditable. But, um, private to public sharing only works one way, so you have to be a sworn law enforcement officer to access the system.
Other questions?
Yeah, just, um, just entertain me, please. What happened if Flock get bought by a bigger company? Then, will, will then Flock inform their customer that there's a chain in, in ownership? And then, if there's a chain in ownership, then, then the term of contract, how would it translate to the new ownership? Do the city of Corleville, or do, does the customer have the right to rewrite the contract? Because now we are supposedly entered a contract with someone else?
Um, we have no plans to, you know, be acquired by another company. I know, I do just wanna say that at the outset, so it's a hypothetical that, you know, I don't have a concrete answer to. But, um, your contract terms should be enforceable with the legal entity that's being purchased, you know, in this case, um, I would imagine.
And that kinda, and it's a little bit, that's a little bit similar to the question about, like, if the company were to go out of business, if, if, you know, that, that would, same deal, kind of a-
Yeah. I, I would say kind of two things on the latter one that come to mind for me, which is, you know, first and foremost, keep in mind that this, like, the data that's being collected and stored by the system is designed to be deleted, right? So like, it's stored for a limited period of time. If we go out of business, uh, that's gonna be a period, you know, that'll, that's a process that will take time, you know, many months. So that, like, data's gonna be collected and deleted over a certain period of time. So like, you know, that control, um, is in place. Um, second, same thing, like, for example, I know someone mentioned, I think, 23andMe here this evening, you know, our commitment not to sell customer data is enshrined in our contract with customers. So like, that's a contractual obligation we have to abide to, abide by. So that's all baked into our agreements as well.
Other questions? Anybody else have other questions? Some of the questions that I have here, I think, are, are, uh, relevant to the, our discussion, the next, like, item B here underneath this agenda item. So some of the questions, like, what happens when leadership changes? What, who, you know, the, the, um, some of the other questions about the usage that's already been occurring. So I might save those for that part, but I do wanna make sure, do we have other questions for, for Cam? Anyone else up here?
Questions out here?
Were you voting on this, Susan? This is pretty dehumanizing.
Okay, so, if there are no other questions from anybody else, I mean, I know there are questions from the crowd, the, you know, the-
I, I would actually like to hear Chief Nicholson when we're done comment, you know, we have been using it, so we apparently bought software to do that, which I was not aware of. And when that started, do we have an agreement with the mall? Do we have an agreement with Lowe's to use their data, North Liberty? What are current agreements with the software that we, the university obviously would be another one? Or do we already have agreements with each of those, so that when we do those searches? But maybe we can wait till Cam's done before.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I, I hear, I hear you folks. I, you know, this is kind of a tough situation just because, um, you know, I, I do want to make sure that everybody's being heard. It's kind of tricky to figure, you know, uh, come up with a way to do this so we can, you know, balance the conversation that we need to have up here and also hearing from folks. So, um, I suppose what I would say, if there, what I, here's what I'll do. I will allow some folks, if you do want to come up to the microphone, if there is a question that you haven't heard. I do want to give you the opportunity to do that. So if there's something for Cam, or, you know, if there's a question that somebody wants to ask.
Kathy Sprinkle. And my question would be, are you going to allow, like say they hire someone to audit? Are you going to allow that person to go in and specifically see where the data is? And that it has been deleted? Or when you talk about monitoring auditing, does that just mean someone coming in and looking at the pictures? Or the video that you've taken and not allowing them into your system to make sure that ALS or AWS or whatever, that they've deleted it, you've deleted it? That would be my question.
Sure. Um, so as far as like a third party independent audit goes, typically how cities have done this historically is that they're looking at audit of the police department's use. So like your department can set up a process where they'll, um, be able to go through and review their audit log, right? And then, um, internal data where like they can, I've seen, you know, the best one I would point folks to is the city of Austin, Texas ran like a year long audit, I think with a third party. Um, where then they went through and identified like, uh, how many ALPR results ended in a stop of a person and for what purpose, right? Like those kinds of things. I am, I am not aware of any third party audit that is like verifying the deletion of data with, with the specificity of that concern. But, um, I would need to take it back and sort of discuss with some folks, you know, what like AWS's process is and like how we would handle that as a company. Um, some like license plate reader data is sensitive. It can be, you know, protected law enforcement information in some cases, so there's that to balance. Um, I know that's not a, you know, particularly helpful answer, but you know, that's how, what we would have to look into as part of that process.
How many people employed by Flock have the physical ability to access your data? And what governance procedures are they supposed to go to before they do that?
Sure. I don't know the specific number. It's a small one, um, that I could take back. And is really a, you know, host of like, it's often C G certified engineers for purposes of, you know, working through like customer, um, issues. Like if there's a request where they have to go in and access data, so there's a law enforcement certification process that they go through. You know, as well as the kind of thing, like our legal team often has to go and certify evidence in court. Um, that an image that was collected, you know, is legitimate. So like those kinds of processes as well. I don't know the specific number of employees offhand.
Oh yeah, what's the false positive rate of the Flock system when alerting law enforcement to a hot list vehicle? And has that been confirmed by anyone outside of Flock?
I don't believe we have a third party, like, you know, comprehensive false positive rate. I think that our optical character, like our accuracy, um, rate for license plate recognition is about 90%. So, you know, we have a high accuracy rate, but, um, this is technology. So again, it goes back to, um, for us, uh, important that local law enforcement agencies have policy in place. Uh, best practice is to make sure that an officer is verifying an alert, both for the plate and for, for example, if it's an NCIC hit, that that file is still active before they take action on an alert. So a human control around misreads. We haven't done it, um, to date.
Hi, I just have two techno, I'm just kind of ticking everything in and I just had two kind of technical questions, uh, kind of on the legality issues.
Sure.
Just, and I'm not, um, one, I'm wondering, when I heard you describing it, is every contract between like every city, uh, every client, is that individualized? I mean, you know, I, I've done a lot of contract work in, in my career and, and, you know, some of it, sometimes it's boilerplate and it just kind of goes through. Or is this something where it is very, um, uh, very individualized negotiated, you know, the party? So like, you know, Corleville could say, we don't want this sold, we don't want this, I mean, the, those are, and then it's indoctrinated into a contract. So if it does get violated, we, we would have contract law precautions. Is that, was that what I understood? That's what I was.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay.
They are individualized. We have standard terms and conditions that I believe are posted on our website.
Sure, of course.
Often they start there. There is a lot of commonality, but you know, certainly in Corleville and in any other city, you know, we're, um, happy to exchange.
So it isn't just like a customer, like general, you know, when you buy something, a lot of times you just sign and this is it, not a bill of sale. It's, you, you, we do go through all the terms, like these are the days we want it saved. This is, we don't want it sold and, you know, we don't want to, whatever, like we don't want anybody else to get it.
That's right.
And then on, on the soft, uh, software purchases, like, you know, if our Corleville police has already accessed some other things without cameras. Did, they must have given permission that we could get that, is that correct?
I don't know enough to know background sort of about like when software access start, like I don't know if that was after the contract.
No, 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 but I just mean in general, like if Corleville said, we're only keeping it for Corleville, we don't want other people to see it.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody with like a software license wouldn't be able to get to Corleville.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, that's, that's just.
Assuming that was the decision your department made, I mean, in this case, if there was no hardware.
I get it, but, but you could make that a question. And then the third, and, and promise last one, is when you do take the, um, views of the license plate and of the cars, when you take the, the snapshots. Um, are those always in public roadways? So like with the, or do they take care to make sure it isn't on like, that they aren't getting private land?
Points of view.
In the, in the points of view, it is always on public roadways, is that correct or no?
Yes, our team is looking at public roadways and trying to, you know, train them on public roadways.
Right.
Um, if it's a private customer, they'll place those, you know, in, on private property.
Of course, of course.
But are sometimes, you know, the, the point is to angle it at the road. That's what's valuable for your law enforcement is to collect, um, that vehicle based information.
Okay.
And then really what it is, is it's a motion captured camera. So like it's capturing of, an image of a vehicle.
Right.
And then only a vehicle image gets actually uploaded to the cloud to be made searchable.
Okay.
So if you have, for example, a person that walks by the camera, it may trigger a motion sensor, but it's not going to get uploaded to the cloud to be made searchable by your department. That's going to be vehicle based information, if that makes sense.
No, that does. I just, I just was, if, if you do have a contract with like a city, right? Because, you know, they have rights to the public streets. Um, there wouldn't be somebody driving in and out of a driveway. Like the camera should not be pointed that direction, correct?
No, not towards like a house or at least it won't be like trained, you know, it won't be like intended to be installed that way.
Right.
That's right.
Cause I would think there would be some legality, potentially that, but when you're on a, a legal street.
I suspect you're right.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Clarification, is this time just for questions directed to Flock?
What's that?
Is this time?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I know this is kind of.
I want to keep it focused and follow the rules.
We've never had a situation like this before, so it's hard, it's, but I, I do hear that. I do hear that people want to ask questions directly.
Okay.
So yes.
My, my question for Flock and, um, one quick answer for the previous commenter. Uh, the, the language in the contract was not written specifically for Corleville because the city council had not even seen the contract until it, after it was executed. Months after. Um, the, the question for you is, the, the very first question that was asked of you is a simple yes, was a simple yes or no question? And we never got a simple yes or no answer. So I want to ask, yes or no, is policy established by the city of Corleville legally binding to Flock?
Um, I want to tell you why I gave a broader answer than saying yes or no to that question. The reason, the reason for that is because your department's policy very often, like the, the law enforcement policy is designed to govern things like how your agency uses the system. Not necessarily how Flock is going to use the system. So.
So no?
So an officer's, a, a policy could say something like, an officer needs to verify a hot list alert before taking action. That wouldn't be a thing that would probably be legally binding, I would imagine. Again, I want to emphasize, I'm not a city, you know, I'm not an attorney and I'm not, you know, your city's attorney. So, um, you should consult with them as part of this process. But that's the reason I'm giving you a slightly broader answer is because there's probably things in your policy that aren't specific to Flock that I don't know if they would be legally binding. Um, that may be different than the kinds of things you're thinking about, like say data retention.
Okay, thank you. Um, also 10% error rate where, uh, if you're in that 10%, you can have a gun pointed at you is not a great track record.
Earlier you were talking about who owns our data and, um, you said that Corleville would own the data. But who owns the aggregate data and who do you sell it to? And how much money is Flock making off of aggregate data, which I really encourage you to look up. Um, creating profiles on people based on our data. They are creating profiles that help them market to people. They help them identify people as a, a profile. You know about this, it, it happens in politics, Facebook, um, it, the Cambridge Analytica scandal. What, who is your responsibility to? Because we are not the customers, the city council and the police department is the customer. Your responsibility is to your shareholders first. So who do you sell the aggregate data to? Because that's important for us.
Great question. So aggregated data, um, this is a term, I suspect it's in Corleville's contracts based on, you know, you bringing this up here. It's probably in our standard terms.
I am an information professional who's studied this and I might know a little bit more about this information. So I'm asking you, who do you sell your aggregate data to?
I'm just, I'm going to respond to your question about aggregated data.
Yes, who do you sell it to?
That, we don't sell aggregated data. It's enshrined in the contract, you'll see that as well.
What contract that we sign that we have customized contract or just in general?
In general, our standard Ts and Cs.
So how do you make money?
Aggregated data works as follows. Uh, at Flock, again to the question about accuracy, right? We care very much about having accurate license plate readers. Um, the public cares very much about having accurate license plate readers. They are technology, you know, they're not perfect, but we're constantly working to improve them. The aggregated data clause is there for purposes, what we do is we pull less than 1% of all customer data that we scrape of identifying information and then use that to train our machine learning model.
And who scrapes it, a human being or AI?
I sus, I, I'm actually not sure offhand.
It's probably AI.
Um, used to train the machine learning model.
Yep.
So that the system's accurate. If there's a new vehicle that gets introduced to the market, we need to teach the system how to do that. And aggregated data is a thing that you can opt out of in your contract if you're not comfortable with it. Cities do do that. We don't sell it. It's not to be sold to data brokers, it's not for the purpose of that, you'll see that in the contract.
What if that changes, what happens? What if Palantir acquires you?
Changing it? I mean, again, we.
You're not the lawyer and you're not, we're not in a court, so you don't have the obligation to tell us the truth, which is why a lot of us don't trust you. Because we do, are educated about it. And a lot of us have had experiences with these kinds of private companies taking our data from us and using it to make money. And we don't see any of that money. And with all due respect, you've said some things that are blatantly not true, um, while we've been sitting here. Um, and AWS, by the way, has zero responsibility to us. Um, they do not care about our community and they don't care about the harm that will come from mass surveillance.
Thank you. All right.
So I've got a question about how much information is captured from what you're calling license plate readers.
Sure.
First off, what are we qualifying as a vehicle? Cause we got a lot of scooters. We've got e-bikes. We've got a lot of different sized vehicles that may or may not require a license. What of that is being tracked?
Uh, I don't know offhand how many vehicle types we have in Flock. Um, I'd be happy to check.
Gotcha. And then another question. So you mentioned that these would be motion, uh, capture, they would be censored by something and not long running. Obviously, motion is going to start triggering before it's the end of the vehicle. I have dents in different spots of my car. What of those dents can be captured and utilized and cataloged for the system? Cause I have a feeling it's all of them. But the way that this keeps getting described, they act as if it's only an ass view of vehicles. I have a feeling it is the entirety. So what exactly is going to prevent software updates in the future from utilizing the already installed hardware? From capturing more than you're already probably lying to us about?
Um, if it's in the image frame, it probably, the machine learning is going to be able to pick it up. So that's, that's how it works today.
So you catch it, you use it, you train it, you don't care if it's deleted quickly because you already got the training out of it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, first, first one is related to your answer about the, um, constitutionality or the fourth amendment cases that you cited, which I found was disingenuous because the cases that you cited, they specifically were concerned with what I would call traditional, traditional AOPR systems, which are stationary systems, which are trained to catch a specific hit on a, you know, on a specific plate. What we are talking about here and what Flock is, it's not an AOPR system. First of all, Flock as, you know, that your business model is data broker, right? And the crucial thing that distinguishes you from a traditional AOPR system is that you collect the photos and you store them in the database and you make them searchable. And this is where the fourth amendment ad go comes in. And you don't need to be a lawyer, you need to have a basic understanding of the fourth amendment to know that the constitutional challenge, uh, arises as soon as you have more than a couple of cameras that are able to track locations across, your movements across the city. And that is in equivalent of putting a tracking device on someone's car. So, please do not cite the cases that are irrelevant and, um, why it was. Do you have an answer to that?
Um, I do, and I would just emphasize, I know there's been a couple of these, you know, comments that like, I am, again, doing my best to, um, give you as much information as I have, as I see it. I, I would disagree with your interpretation of, um, case law around fourth amendment violations. So there's a couple of underlying major cases, like USP Carpenter, for example, that, um, basically make up modern case law. And it is very overwhelmingly, the throughput to it is whether you can track a person through the whole of their movements on a public road. It's basically USP Carpenter, USP Jones, and there's an aerial related case from I think 2022 called Baltimore. Um, it's the city of Baltimore versus Beautiful Struggle, which was a nonprofit over aerial surveillance. License plate readers today, for example, if you just look at the city of Norfolk, which is where that case is being filed, cover less than 1% of all of Norfolk's public roads. So you're just simply not collecting a whole of a person's movements. And that's what courts are going to consider. It's, you know, it's not going to be up to me to decide. We feel confident, um, in the legal landscape around, around license plate readers. But that particular case will, you know, come to resolution, uh, we expect in the next few months.
All right, so I just want to cor, again, correct you on that. You're saying, you know, that they don't cover enough distance to be able to track, uh, individual person's movement. Well, in that specific case, you know, and there are multiple people in that case. But the people who are on the case, and there are several of them, some of them have been tracked, you know, as many as, as, as somewhere around 800 times in the period of, you know, the last 30 days. 800 times the location, the location and movement has been recorded. That is enough to establish where they go, you know, what their daily patterns are, what places they frequent, what community, you know, they, they associations, where they went to the doctor. Where, what church they go to. And that is the reason why that case is moving. My, uh, second question is, uh, where. My second question is, where do you personally live and do you have a flock in your community?
I live in North Carolina and I do.
What's your license plate number?
I don't know the answer to that. I actually don't.
Can you email it to the council so it's in the public record?
All right, thank you. And I will say this, I do, I, I, I understand, I know this is tough, folks, like I said, this is a strange situation we're in, but I do, after these next two folks, I would like to move on to the next, the next part of the agenda item, so. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much for giving us extra time to ask specific questions, I really appreciate it.
I hear ya.
So I am curious, can law enforcement search the database, their flock that they have access to specifically for bumper stickers? Like a trans flag or a MAGA flag or a Mexican flag bumper sticker or a Planned Parenthood supporter bumper sticker or ACLU bumper sticker? And come up with a whole list of cars with a specific type of bumper sticker?
When you're running a traditional search on the Flock system, it's gonna pick up the presence of a bumper sticker, not the content of it. We have a, that's how overwhelmingly license plate readers work today, so you're gonna get, you're gonna know that there's a decal, but not what it is. We have a software package that we call Freeform, which is a, you know, machine learning based search where you basically type in vehicle characteristics that you're looking for with a vehicle. And if there is content included in that search, you're basically gonna get a flag. There's a content moderation policy around that.
So is, is Flock working on improving that? Searchability for law enforcement?
We're working on improving our searchability for law enforcement, certainly, but we also recognize that there are controls that have to be in place around those searches. So we've implemented policy on our side as, you know, well as at the local level.
Thank you so much.
All right, last one.
Okay, so I had a question about the live video on LPR cameras.
Sure.
Being marketed, marketed that it's coming late 2025. And there's no, like, updates needed really to get access to that? So when is that, do you have a date for when that's coming?
I don't have a date. I will say that there is action that has to be taken to access that feature. So it's opt-in for customers. It's both gonna be at your department's discretion and agencies are also gonna have the ability to just make, to have that option removed from the software if they choose to.
All right, last one, please, yes.
Thank you. I stepped out because I had to find this piece of information. You were referencing Carpenter versus United States from the 2018 Supreme Court decision, correct?
Sure.
So it specifically says, as with GPS, sorry, my phone just rotated, as with GPS information, the timestamped data provides an intimate window into a person's life, revealing not only his particular movements, but through them, his familiar political, familial, political, professional and religious and sexual associations. This is the Supreme Court saying that what you're saying isn't actually being honest. It's disingenuous to say that they don't agree that this is not the same as a traditional plate reader piece of information.
I just, I wanna draw a distinction between the data sources. So the data that's being cited in Carpenter is cell phone data and you'll see more references to kind of like what you're describing. That lives in a person's pocket. I think that Carpenter had like six, 7,000 data points going from point to point. So you're tracking a person's movement from one place to another and you get a comprehensive view, which is why that requires a warrant, whereas license plate readers are fixed images at a single point in time.
I mean, 5,000 communities across the United States certainly becomes ubiquitous at a certain point.
Again, I, I don't know enough, you know, to know, but at a certain point, like, courts are gonna make decisions over what level of density, I suspect, will require a warrant for access to license plate readers. That just hasn't been done today, they've, you know, been upheld to date.
All right. Thank you, folks, and again, I appreciate it, I appreciate the patience of everybody in the room here. Thank you for taking the time to answer some of these questions. And I think we'll move on now to the second part of this agenda item, which is going to be our discussion, so.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you, and yeah, thank you, folks. Thank you. Yeah, this is, this is a strange, this, we've never had a situation like this before and I, I do wanna make sure that we're striking a balance between keeping the conversation moving, but also making sure that we're hearing from folks. So let's, we've, we've heard a lot, we've heard a lot over the last few months. We have been, you know, engaging with the public, we've been engaging with city staff, we've been hearing a lot of stuff about this situation. So I wanna open up the discussion on, on our end about what, what we, how we want to proceed moving forward. So first things first, I do just, I have to bring up the fact that the, the contract is signed. And yes, I know there's been a lot of conversation about that process, the, you know, whether or not there were issues with the procurement agreement, I mean, we can, we can absolutely talk about that stuff, there's no denying that there were some things about the process that were, were not great. I don't believe, and I know there are probably a lot of folks in the room that might not agree with me, and I can understand why people might not trust government officials, especially right now, I get that. So I don't, I totally understand why there is some of that concern and that, that lack of trust, it's valid. But I don't believe that, I think that the, the messiness of the process was not about anybody trying to pull a fast one or trying to be sneaky. You can absolutely say that there were some things that could have been done better, that could be more clear, no, no argument that there at all. But what I, what I, I do think that some of the process issues have more to do with just some, maybe some, I don't know if, I don't know that I would even use the word mistake necessarily, but more just process things that were, were not clear, were not, you know, could have been done better. So I, I do wanna say that, I don't believe that anyone was trying to be sneaky or trying to pull a fast one. Yes, issues exist, no question there, but I don't know that there was any type of ill intent with this. And I, I say that with fully understanding the fact that it's hard to trust government officials like right now. And then when stuff like this happens, it makes it even more challenging. And one of the reasons I really wanted to bring this back for discussion, even though I could have said, you know, the contract's signed, we're moving on. And I'm not trying to pat myself on the back or anything like that, but the reason I did bring it back is because I wanted to give the public the chance to weigh in and to have some accountability for the fact that there was some messy stuff that, that happened with, with the way all of this went down. And so that, that's why we're here and that's, that's why I did, I did feel it was important to look at this and to say, we're gonna reevaluate it. We hear these, this great concern from the public and sure, I think there were some things we could have done better on process, so let's, let's come back and have a discussion. Let's look at what it would take, you know, what, what are the consequences of breaking the contract? Do we, you know, if, what are, do we want to adopt policies? What, what, you know, how do we wanna move forward? And so that's where we're at right now. So I just wanna start by noting again, like I did at the beginning when I started talking, that the contract is signed. And I feel like it's important to talk about what are the options for getting out of it? So Kevin, do you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Well, I mean, I think like any other contract, you could choose to decide you're not going to fulfill the terms of your contract, you would breach your contract and you would probably have damages in the amount of the contract that would have to be paid.
So are you saying that would be in addition to the, the $36,000?
No, that's the, the $18,000 per year. You'd have $18,000 this year and $18,000 next year, since it's a two-year deal.
Okay, so we would, we would just be out?
You would have to pay them.
We would, we'd be out the money.
Right.
We'd be out the money.
Correct.
And when will that take place? If we, if we breach the contract?
Sorry about that. You'd have $18,000 this fiscal year and then probably $18,000 next fiscal year because they're not paid, I don't believe they're paid up, they're not paid upfront for the whole thing at once, it's per fiscal year.
Thanks. I mean, and that's, that is tricky, just, you know, I, I recognize that it's not an enormous amount of money, but this is not a big department and we do have an obligation to be responsible stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And I also hear though that there are taxpayers that don't want our, their money spent on this. So, so that is, we'd be out either way, I suppose, is what I'm saying. So I guess I wanna start with that. What are the thoughts about the contract?
I'll, I'll start. We as a council have multiple obligations. One is obviously fiduciary obligations, but we also have a greater obligation, a great obligation, obligation to provide for the safety and benefit to the greater good of our community, our residents, our businesses, our visitors. And that includes providing adequate and, and up-to-date tools for, for law enforcement. Heard a lot of talk about Flock. We've heard a lot of talk about cameras. We've heard a lot of talk about data, what kind of storage that we're talking about. What we haven't talked about, and I've not really heard much talk about it, is the benefit. Something I've always tried to look at is, in any situation, look at the facts of the matter and then weigh the risks versus the benefits of, of any situation. There's risks in, in everything. Using a credit card can get hacked. Everybody's got credit cards, there's risks in everything we do in life. The benefits to having these types of cameras are a great law enforcement tool. And it's been mentioned, there's a very, 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 very small percentage of hits, I guess, whatever you wanna call it. But I look at Amber Alerts, yeah, we don't have a lot of Amber Alerts all the time, but there was just one real recently. Silver Alerts, domestic violence situations. I mean, think about the different types of opportunities that these cameras can be used to identify perpetrators of crimes and, and-
Tracked actors.
And situations where missing persons are, are needed to be found. I think they're a great tool, I really do. And we have to look at the greater good of our community. I appreciate all your input, I really do. We've kinda basically been hearing one side of, of the issue. We have 20, we have 23,000 residents in this, in our community. I can guarantee you that there's a lot of people that are definitely in favor of these and we all run in different circles, I get that. And we've had, we've had a lot of opportunity over the last couple of months to talk to a lot of different people. The overwhelming input that I've gotten is, what's the question? What's the big deal? And it's, it should be done. My comment about mass surveillance, if anybody has taken a picture of, of anything at any point in time, it is a snapshot in time. As your vehicle would go past a, one of these cameras, it's a snapshot in time. I don't classify that as mass, mass surveillance. I really don't. You have to look at, again, going like, looking at the benefit of, benefit versus the risk and providing for the greater good of our community. Also looking at our obligations that we've taken, I don't, to provide obligations to, to provide what's best for our community, fiscally and otherwise, so.
You know, I do wanna, I do wanna acknowledge, I mean, and again, I know there's a lot of opinions about law enforcement in the room, I get that, I understand that, but that is cha, one of the challenges, I do, because I do think it's important for law enforcement to have tools to do their job. And there are, there, you know, there are some legitimate uses. I mean, there was, you know, Marshalltown is not a very big community and there was a shooting that, and I, and I do think it's important that law enforcement have tools to address shootings. There was a homicide case here in Iowa City where these were helpful in solving that case. And so I do wanna acknowledge that and, and that's one of the reasons that I find this challenging is because I want our law enforcement to be able to use these tools appropriately. It, it's just for me, it has, you know, the question I've always had is, is just about the, the practices of this, of this company and whether or not it, like you, you know, like you mentioned, whether or not the, the risk is, is worth it. Because I, I do, I do, and we have heard, I do think it's important to acknowledge that we have heard from people that are in favor, we have. I mean, I, I don't wanna minimize that, I don't wanna minimize that and I don't wanna overlook that. But again, I just think there is a lot of fear, there, you know, that's why I think it's important that, that we did take the time to, to have this, this conversation.
It's, it's, I think it's a, a very important tool, it provides, provides six sets of eyes 24/7, 365, and that's for a very, very cheap price compared to additional law enforcement officers. Some of the information, I got some information from, from Flock, believe it or not, but according to their, their information, cameras have been used, this is nationwide, have been used to solve 700,000 crimes a year. How many of those would be solved without, you know, I, I, we don't know, we can't answer that, but it's a, it's a-
We need to make, we need to give him a chance to speak, please.
My point is that they are a very, very important tool in, in, in law enforcement, not just in crime solving, but to find missing persons. You know, if somebody's niece or grandchild got taken and, and there's an Amber Alert, what would you do? Would you like to have some law enforcement tools out there? Of course you would. Does that happen very often? No, I'm thankful for that. But when it's needed, it's needed. Our fire chief is sitting there and, and, you know, and there's, do we need fire equipment? Do we need all the apparatuses? No, probably not, unless it's needed. Unless it's needed. And when it's needed, it's needed now. It's needed now. Same way with law enforcement, law enforcement tools are the same way. And that's, and that's a fact. That's a fact. I believe in dealing with facts and logic and I'm telling you facts.
All right, we're gonna let, we, we have had a lot of discussion, we need, now it's, now we need, we've heard from folks. We need, now it's, now we need, we've heard from folks. Now it's our turn to have a discussion up here, okay? Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, other thoughts, other comments?
Who wants to go next?
Yep.
I'll chime in. I mean, I think Rich has some great points, risk versus benefits. For me, like I said a few weeks ago, um, the era we're in is, is, uh, fearful. So, so I think that increases the risk of these sys- systems, uh, in terms of our government abusing them. Not locally, but, but certainly nationally. For me, uh, everything we've heard, granted, I did not anticipate all the concerns. I don't necessarily share them, but we have a lot of members of our community who could, could be potentially targeted, uh, in a variety of ways, and this adds to that a little bit. Crime has not increased. We, we don't have an acute problem. That's, you know, nationally, it's, there's been a steady trend down. I think locally, we had a police report a few weeks ago, um, you know, not to say it's not a problem, but I think it's, you know, um, I think our police, uh, in our community, you know, uh, are well-served by the police, uh, without, without Flocks right now. So, for me, if I had a choice, they came to us and said, we could have this for a free trial for two years. We heard these same concerns. Would I say, would I, would I be for it or against it? I think I'd be against it. And, um, mostly in part because of the timing. So, so the money is not a huge factor for me. It's a regret, but, but, but not a part, a key part of our decision on, in terms of whether to proceed with this or not. If we did proceed, what's actually on here is a policy. And if we're gonna have a, if we're gonna have the contract and we're gonna have a policy, I would want to make it very restrictive. Minimal storage, um, minimal sharing, um, so that the potential for abuse is, of the system is minimized. So the, the, the policy as written doesn't factor any of that in. I'm, I'm assuming we can change that retention, from what I just heard, the retention period. We can change that to, uh, whatever we want, um, within, within some restraints. And that would be what I, i- if we were to implement it, I would strongly be in favor of a policy that is, uh, that minimize, that really minimizes the potential for abuse.
Yeah, and you're correct. It's the poli- there's a policy on the agenda tonight. You know, based on the, like, I just wanted to do another quick temperature check. Based on the other meeting we had, it did seem that, you know, there was some general consensus about, uh, being in favor of moving forward with the contract, mostly because it's signed. But I wanna make, I wanna make absolutely crystal clear, before we do anything else, that that is still the situation. So, uh, what are some other thoughts on that?
I, I think that, you know, I, I, I'm listening to everything. You know, like I said last time, the last time I was in a meeting, I apologize for missing the last meeting, traveling for work again. It seems like a, a recurring thing, but anyway, um, I wanted to see the date on both sides, you know. The one thing that, that I am listening to is what everybody's saying about, uh, marginalized communities being targeted. And am I part of that? No, I'm not. So it's hard for me to understand that, a hundred percent. I also see some benefit to it as well. I mean, there's some cases that have been solved that would not, you know, I feel that, uh, worse, it's been helpful. I have a lot of concerns. I mean, and were my concerns answered tonight? Uh, maybe some of them, right? But not only do I think a policy is strong, policies necessary, not, but I also think that if, if we do this and we move, we, we end up accepting the policy, that policy should also become, um, you know, something that we could put in place for private entities within city limits and put a policy and a procedure in place for anybody using Flock cameras within city limits that would put guardrails up to protect our constituents. Not only, you know, with our, our cameras, but the ones that are being used publicly, within city limits.
I, I'm not, I, if, I'm not sure if we could do that, but do you, could we, would we be able to pass an ordinance that would?
Well, that would be.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, you could have an, you can, I mean, you can try to pass an ordinance, not whether the state's gonna come back and there, state's gonna, you know what happens when you do stuff like this? The state comes back and does that, so I, I don't know, but I, I haven't looked at Iowa's these ordinance, so.
That's fine, yeah, no, just, that's just the type.
But, but, yeah, remember that, and I think that I, I think I heard you right, that the people who have private systems can access ours, if I remember correctly.
All right, like I said. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Lori, what are your thoughts?
Well, I just, you know, I agree with all that's been said, and I don't wanna, again, say how much, um, you know, we have taken this to heart and listened to all of you and so on, and, and listened to the, uh, the data, the, uh, just all the people involved. I guess I'll just say that. And the, I, I have made some points that I just see that we need to learn to embrace technology. AI is here and we, I, we need to learn how to use it correctly. And, um, this is a two-year contract. Uh, we can decide on the retention time. We will look at the policy closely, and I would like to work on this. I would like to see that we can make this work.
Okay. Hi, what are your thoughts?
Thank you to each and every one of you who have spoken, emailing, texting, calling, meeting, meeting in person. This is what, um, this is what public engagement looked like. This is what we want you to continue to do. It's engage us. This is how you hold us accountable and educate us on things that we might not know. So please continue to do that. Also, thank you to our staff. Our staff work really hard. You know, they are doing this every day. This is their live work. They are an expert in a lot of these things. So, for us, and I can't speak for my colleague, I can only speak for myself, as city councillor, we are elected by the people to represent all of Corvo. Whether we agree with your opinion or not. But we have to be able to take information from all sizes and make an informed decision that keep everybody here, especially the community who will be most affected of our policy, safe. So having heard from everyone, having heard from the Flock representative, having talked to, um, representative from ACLU, there are, for me, there are legitimate concern. There are questions that I have asked that I did not get the answer that I was satisfied with. Yes, technology is improving. You know, AI is, is here to stay, but we have a choice. As people, we have a choice. And just because something is working, that doesn't mean that we, we don't continue to ask question and we don't continue to, to, to hold, you know, folks accountable, right? People who you elected to represent you. For me, my concern is consent. I know that I have a phone. E- every day I am, I am consenting to having my information, you know, collected. When I use a credit card, I'm consenting to a bank that holding my, my, you know, or giving me credit to use. I'm consenting that. That is my choice. As a person, I have full control of that. But for a tool to be installed in our community, yes, it's on public land, it's on public street, but I have no control whether I can give consent or not. You know, even if I say I don't want to, I, I can't avoid it. So consent is a huge concern for me. Safety, breach of data, we know that that's happened. Maybe not daily, but it could be monthly, it could be yearly. That is a risk. And that is a risk that none of us can say that, well, it's only affect a small number of folks when data is be- being breached. There is no guarantee that if there's a breach of data, you know, the, the safety is there for, for some of us, and I'm not okay with that. There, this is a tool, and I am all for providing the tool so that our police department, our law enforcer have the tool to do their job better, to protect the community better, to serve better. But when there's a tool that we are not quite, we don't feel that it is one-hundred percent beneficial for all of us, then maybe we need to take a step back and revial- reevaluate. Maybe now is not the right time to use that tool. Because the tool will be always available. You know, we can come back in a month, we can come back in a year, we can come back in two years and look at the tool again. And maybe then there will be more rail guard in place. Maybe then the technology will advance to, to, to a point where, you know, it's allow us to have more control. I, I don't know. But right now, we don't have that. It's also the trust between the, the law enforcement and public. There has, historically, there's have been, that trust has been dwindling, right? Right here in Corvo, I can say that, yes, there's a bad apple in every single places of work. But for the majority, our police department truly do work for the safety of our public. They do. They put their life on the line every day when they go to work. And I just want to remind people that they are our neighbor. You know, our, our officer is our neighbor. You know, the, the, the parents in your kid's school. You know, they're just human like us, so please don't villainize them. You know, I want to support them to have the right tool, but right now, I, I just don't trust the tool. But I want to encourage the, the public to talk to our officer, see them as a person. You know, don't let the, their uniform and their title keep you away from getting to know them. They're here to serve you, so please use like that. Transparency. Transparency is, is, is important. It's important in keeping our democracy going. Without transparency, democracy would die. And, and this is a lesson learned for, for all of us here, sitting here, is that I'm, I'm asking for, for a way that we can make our processes in gaining information, um, a bit better. You know, staff have so much on their plate, they are always think that they need to take care of. So sometime when things are presented to staff and when it gets to council, it's almost diluted. And so we, we only get a piece of information, and if we know to ask question, if we don't know to ask question, then it's, 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 it's just, it is what it is. And so I hold myself accountable for, from now on, to continue to ask more question. So tran- transparency is, is important. Oversight. We can hire third party to audit, but that mean more money spent. We can use that money, um, to spend on, strengthen our social services, to, to, to service people here who needed that service. We can spend money on, um, you know, bolstering our affordable housing, instead of hiring another company to audit this work. I just wanna make sure that I cover everything. The right to privacy. Each of us have the right to our privacy. Me, as a city, city councillor, sitting here, serving you, still have the right to my own privacy. Right, when I step off of this table and I no longer wear a council hat, I would ask that each of you respect my privacy as a citizen, as a resident. And so the right to privacy is really important to me. I don't feel comfortable taking that away from people. The economic impacts. There are, we are a city that is connected by the hips to many other cities. There are folks who live elsewhere but work here, shop here, eat here, play here, send kid to school here. And the minute that they don't feel safe in our community, they will stop coming. That will have an economic impact in our community. That can potentially prevent us from providing the best service that we can for the people of Corvo. We took an oath to protect and serve every single Corvo resident, regardless of age, origin, skin color, religion, affiliation, all of that. We took an oath. Within that oath, that mean that we obligate to extend the protection to community who are more vulnerable. That is how you balance the equation. You can't just say that, you know, everybody is protected the same way. We know that that's not true. I experience that every day. You know, my colleague here as a white male would never understand the trauma that I may experience, or I have experienced. And vice versa, I would never know the privilege that he has. So it is our obligation to protect and serve when it needs. So, and I think the risk versus the benefit, right now, I see more risk than benefit. If we were in a different political climate, this might have a, a different outcome. But I think right now, in this current political climate, there is no guarantee of safety for anyone. Local control is being taken away every day, every day. And if there is something that we can do to ensure that, you know, the people that live here, the people who are marginalized, the most vulnerable, can feel that safe, that welcoming, that they are part of the community, we need to do that. And frankly, none of us would like to be surveilled 24/7. Thank you.
All right.
Can I say one thing?
Sure, go for it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I do have one disagreement with one thing that you said. And as a city council members, I, I just want to regard our police chief and also our city administrators with the highest esteem. We had four opportunities to know about this contract. We had it in the budget. And then at a work session, there was a public hearing and we approved the budget and we watched a FLOC presentation.
I agree. Thank, thank you for pointing that out. I, I, I do agree. But here's, here's what I'm gonna say. Thank you. He, he is, he is what I'm gonna say.
When we approved the budget.
No, we're not. We're. Anyway, continue, Lori. Continue. Are you done, Lori, or do you have more to say?
I, I just don't think it's fair that we, I mean, as city council members, we were aware of this and the work that the police are doing all around our community. And this is just one way that we can be a part of that. And we were aware of the FLOC.
Yeah, I think, I think that is, that is, you're pointing out one of the things that is kind of challenging about this, Lori. And, and because you're right. I mean, there, it was in the budget. We had a budget work session and a budget, you know, the presentation. It's actually even in the budget presentation that our finance director presented to us. I think the challenge is the fact that we, at the time, did not have awareness of the company. Like I, that's one of the things that I said right at the beginning is that when I saw that on the budget, I thought it was a tool. Like I, I had never heard of FLOC as an organism, or like didn't know what they did and like that. So I, that's what I thought is that it was a tool for local law enforcement. And it, and it is a tool. I mean, that, that is what it is. That, there's no denying that. And there is some benefit to it, you know, and that, that's what I was hope, thinking that, that we were getting is, is something that was, you know, that chief could use that. And, and I do, I do think that is important. I, I, I don't want to minimize that and I want to make it clear that it's not about our local law enforcement. And, and it, the, what I really and truly wish more than anything is that there would be another way that we could give them that tool. Like that, that's what I wish. I wish that there was another option. Just because I do think there are concerns about the, the, the political climate and all of that. But I, you, you are correct. And I do think that's one of the things that has made this so challenging is that like, you know, one, or one of the things that this process has brought to the forefront is that, you know, we, we, we have to do a, a good job of, like you said, hi, answering questions. And there's a lot of challenging parts to these roles that I, that are hard to understand if you're not in this role. So this idea that, you know, we weren't paying attention or we weren't, you know, a- all of that stuff or that's, it's trying to get snuck through. I understand. I, I get it. I, I get why people think that. I'm not minimizing that either. But as we've mentioned a lot, the dynamic is that staff is in it every day, all day, every day. This is their job. Just like I go to the university and I teach, you know, I do that every day. Spend hours and hours doing that. Same deal with the city administrator, that, you know, that this is their day to day. And what we get is, you know, a, a, not as a kind of a condensed version of the information that they're a part of and the knowledge and the experience that they are a part of. And that, that is something that is kind of challenging about these roles. And that doesn't mean that it's an excuse. It doesn't mean that you don't do your homework. It doesn't mean that you don't respond to your emails. It does, that's not what I'm saying. It's that you, that there are some, you know, when you're, we are not subject matter experts in, I always use the engineering as an example. I'm not a subject matter expert in municipal engineering. We don't go through, you know, the, the, the nitty gritty of the day to day. We get it presented to us. That doesn't mean that we don't pay attention. It doesn't mean that we don't read things. It doesn't mean that we don't ask questions. You know, and that's, I do think we need to get better about that. But you said it earlier, hi, like if you, I think you said it, that sometimes how do we, like, how do you know what questions to ask, you know? And that, I think is a, a reality that folks, that, that is one of the challenges of being in these positions is, is, is that. And so I do, I do want to say that, you know, it, I get it. People are right to be upset. I'm not saying that, but it's not a matter of, you know, we, the people trying to sneak it through or us not paying attention. It's, it's, it's hard for sure.
Sure.
This is a tool. And a tool is, doesn't do anything unless there's, uh, it's used by personnel. The lawsuits that have been referenced, there's been a common thread involved in those. And it's always been a, a human element. These cameras and the data they collect are gonna sit there and nothing's gonna happen unless, unless a person gets involved and uses the tool. So by inference, I mean, we're, we, yeah, I, we, we support our local police department and chief and everybody else. But I don't want the implication that that we don't trust them. I do not want that to happen because I do trust our police department. And, and, and reading, uh, you know, through, through this, uh, the, the draft of the policy, there's a lot of safeguards built into this. And I think it's a pretty strong policy. If there's, needs to be some tweaking maybe, but as it's written, I think it's a pretty strong policy.
Yeah.
And it's a, and, um, so I don't want any inference out there that would cast any doubt on our police department.
Yeah, I, I, and I think that, I, I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but I think the general, I, I think that that's the opinion that all of us have. I, I would, I would, I, I feel like that's, you know, I think we're all on the same page with that on, on the, you know, we don't want it to be implied that there is a, you know, it's about our, our law enforcement, you know? And, and any misgivings that I have, it's, it's not that. It's, it's, it's the, it's, you know, what, what can we do with the, with the, about the, some of the questions and concerns that we have. So just, again, I want to keep it moving along. So Royce, I want to make sure I have your position correct. That you are in favor of continuing with the contract with the safeguards in place. I want to be clear before we move on.
I would favor a vote on that specifically.
Well, we can't vote. I just, because right now we're just.
Next time. We could vote at the next meeting.
Well, this, like I said, we, the contract is already signed.
But we could default on the contract would be the vote.
Well, I would like to have this put to bed tonight. Yeah, I would like to have it put to bed tonight. And I think that if that is something that we want to pursue, I, would we, what would the process be? Would we table this agenda item and then come back with a new resolution?
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do what Councilmember Knutson suggested, you would have to, your, your item on the, on the table tonight is the, the policy.
Right.
And if you're, if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna go forth with the, the contract, it makes sense spending a lot of time on the policy.
Exactly.
So, but you, you don't have a, you don't have an item on the agenda tonight.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And so then we would, we would have to leave the, this agenda behi- item behind.
You would, if you're, if that's what you want to do, you would just, you know, either table or just not act, not get up for, for that, not act on it and move on.
Because my assumption after the last meeting is that there would seem to be general consensus about moving forward with the contract. That was, those were kind of the head nods that we had when we brought the discussion up. It seemed like there were three, there was a three to two. And I just want to make sure that that's still where we are at as we move forward.
I would like to make a motion that we move forward and adopt the resolution of a, that is presented by, the, the resolution that we have regarding a, a policy regarding the automated license plate readers technology.
Well, I don't think we need a motion because it's already on.
You, you would do, you would do that to adopt the resolution.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
And then you could have a vote yes or no, and then you'd know what you're doing. You know, you'd have that taken care of. But you need, you'd also need a second to actually act on that motion.
Well, first of all, listen, this is really tough for me. I want you guys to know that. And I have had a lot of people that have got to contact me that are in favor of this as well. And I've had situations where this has been beneficial. And I've sit on juries where this has been beneficial, right? Originally, I was totally against it. I'm leaning towards it.
That's.
I, I, every, everything inside me tells me that this is good for our constituents. It, it is, if, if we can save one child from getting kidnapped, if we can help somebody that's, their car's been stolen, if it helps solve a murder, to me, that is very beneficial, very beneficial. And I, but I understand. I mean, this is tough, right? So.
Yep. I'm glad. I just wanted to make sure we were crystal clear on that before we moved on with the vote. So, thank you for that. So we did have a, a motion to approve. Uh, do we need to read, just have the resolution read?
I can, I can, I can read it and I'll just
Sure.
do it that way. So, resolution approving the policy regarding automated license plate reader technology. This motion was introduced by Councilmember Vogelzang, and then we need a second.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Goodrich. All right, could I have the roll call on that vote, please?
Knutson.
We're voting to approve this policy now?
Yes, the, the policy as presented.
As presented, yes.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
So we approved a policy tonight, and then what? I just, I just wanna, it, it, just please help me to.
Yeah, I think that we can approve it as it, approve it as it is, and then we could amend it later, right?
The resolution can, resolution can always be amended at a later time.
So we can amend it. We can amend it with some of the input.
But then will, 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 will there be another agenda items for another vote regarding this technology? Or this is it? Like, once we approve this, we have resolution, then, then is that thing in motion?
Yes, because we've got the, we've got the, the three majority that, you know, we've had the discussions about the contract that are in favor of continuing with the, you know, not canceling the contract. Does that make sense? So this would be for adopting a policy for that. That's why I wanted to get clear about what we were doing before we voted on the resolution. So this would just be about the policy?
I, I don't want, I know that the contract is signed and I know that this is voting on policy.
That's all right.
I would like to have stronger policy if, you know, if, if it come down to having the majority to, to move forward. So.
We can amend it.
I can.
Go for it. Nay, go for it. Okay.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
All right. The resolution is approved, all ayes. All right. Thank you, everybody, for the conversation. And we will make sure that we can get the policy tightened up. All right. Next agenda item, we have a, a public hearing for 198 First Street and 106 First Avenue. And this is a change in land use. And this goes about a, a change in land use to mixed use. And that will match the rest of the Gather Iowa development properties to the west and north of these lots that were amended to mixed use in 2021.
Madam Mayor, if you want to wait.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll wait.
Can we take a break? Go ahead.
Oh, yep, go to the bathroom. All right. Okay. Dave, would you like to start with the Community Development Department report?
This amendment is part of the Gather Iowa project. Uh, properties to the west and north were amended from corridor commercial to mixed use back in 2021 to allow planning and design work for the development to move forward. These properties were omitted from the petition at that time because they were not under contract or ownership uh, by the development group at that time. Subject properties are now under contract, which allows the developer to pursue land entitlement efforts such as land use amendments as well as rezoning. Gather Iowa's in mixed use development that consists of retail, restaurant, and multifamily uses. And the proposed land use map amendment can be considered consistent with the Gather Iowa master development plan as well as surrounding land uses. The Planning and zoning commission reviewed this request at their September 3, 2025 meeting and by a vote of five to zero, the commission recommended to amend the Corville community plan, land use map from, from corridor commercial to mixed use for the properties at 198 First Street as well as 106 First Avenue. So this essentially, in short, just brings these last two remaining properties into alignment with the master development plan for Gather Iowa.
All right. Okay, sounds good. All right. I will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us about this? Do we have any written comments? Okay, I will close the public hearing and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2025-1014, an ordinance limiting the Corville community plan to reflect certain property known as 198 First Street, 106 First Avenue in Corville, to be designated mixed use in place of corridor commercial use. This ordinance introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this agenda item? All right, roll call, please.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Next up, we have the Gather Iowa First Edition Public Hearing. This PUD site plan and final plat is for a mixed use development on lots one through three, Gather Iowa First Edition. We'll start again with the Community Development Report from Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. The original PUDA master development plan was approved in 2022 and updated earlier this year. The entire project scope is 10 acres and five lots. Gather Iowa First Edition is 6.49 acres and lots one through three. It consists of the development north of First Street. And the provided PUDB site plan provides an account of all uses, parking and landscaping for the entire project for reference. However, First Edition and the final plat are limited to, again, lots one through three. So in the case of this development here, this is lot one, this is lot two, and this is lot three. This is shown as a future phase, which will be second edition, south of First Street. Um, and this is lot four, and this is lot five here.
Which one's four?
Uh, four is in the southwest corner. Uh, 4 is in the southwest corner.
Oh, okay.
And that will be part of Second Edition in the second phase.
It's got all the recycled places around.
Correct, correct. Uh, Lot 1 is .66 acres, and Lot 2 is .79 acres. These lots will contain one-story multi-tenant buildings for retail and restaurant businesses. Each business, each building is 7,000 square feet, 30% is planned for retail users, and 70% is planned for restaurant users. Orienting these buildings close to Second Street is intentional, as it is important to have a strong commercial and pedestrian present from Second Street. Parking is predominantly provided uh, behind buildings. A decorative concrete and artificial turf courtyard are provided between buildings. Lot 3 is 4.37 acres and will contain a pro, a five-and-a-half-story parking garage wrapped in a six-story multifamily building. The multifamily component will have 293 residential units. Pool and courtyard are planned in the interior space, and artificial turf open space areas provided in the front of the building. 388 parking stalls will be available on the parking structure, and Gather Iowa First Edition will provide a total of 493 parking stalls. I can show you some pictures of, uh, with the main building. This is the apartment, uh, wrap around the parking garage. And then these are the retail buildings.
I like the looks of it.
I think it looks better than it is now.
All right. And can you tell us about the Planning and Zoning Commission report?
Yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the request at their September 3rd meeting, and by a vote of five to zero, the commission recommended to approve uh, the PUDB site plan and final plat for Gather Iowa First Edition.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you for that. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us about this agenda item? And do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider the first resolution.
Resolution approving the amended PUDB site plan for Gather Iowa First Edition, Correville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson. Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And let's hear the second resolution, please.
Resolution approving the amended final plat for Gather I, Gather Iowa First Edition, Correville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, another public hearing for Heartland Plaza Part 2. And this amendment will add 157 parking stalls on the east, west, and south sides of the plan, and will expand the Costco fuel station by adding six dispensers. And it connects, also connects, uh, the trail, which terminates at Heartland and Commerce Drive, to the Ewald Recreation Area, and as well as other landscaping pla, and, uh, updates to the landscaping plan. So, Dave, what do you have for us about this?
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, image that I have depicted on the screen now probably best depicts the existing, um, conditions, as well as what is proposed on this. Um, a total of 157 parking stalls will be gained with this plan. Uh, expanded park, expanded parking and fuel stations, as well as headlights screening will be addressed with a combination of vegetation, as well as retaining walls. A detailed retaining wall plan and cross-section, uh, was provided to City Council. Uh, just a quick overview, there's a retaining wall in the southeast corner with development of that parking lot. Um, that retaining wall is below grade, as is the retaining wall, uh, immediately north of the building, uh, here. These retaining walls here are above grade, and this is a retaining wall here as well, that is also above grade. These two retaining walls are actually being elevated to also act as headlights screening, uh, for, uh, the expanded parking area, as well as the revised traffic circulation and drive aisle for the fuel pump station, which is being expanded right here. So, this gives you a pretty good idea of the existing area and the existing pumps, and this shows the expansion area as well.
Got a question. What's, what's the projected timetable relative to the timetable for the roundabout?
Uh, spring of next year. And that is a project that Costco will be coordinating with the, um, city on.
Okay.
Uh, what about
Why do they need more parking?
I've never been there where, I go there not infrequently, and
I think, um, I think in, in speaking with, uh, in speaking with, uh, rep, representatives from Costco, uh, a lot of the additional, um, outside parking is going to be planned for employees to provide more parking inside the unit. But given certain times of day, you go, um, also on the weekends, um, it, it can be difficult to find parking.
I said the same thing when we were reviewing this, and our city attorney on that Saturday followed 20 people around the lot looking for an empty spot.
Wow.
So, um
Yeah, yeah.
So.
They're not expanding the store.
No, 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 it's just the number of people that are
They need that many just for their existing customer base. Interesting. I guess they're doing well.
And then they, and then the gas station will, you'll go, you'll go a different direction, you'll pull through and then come back the other way, correct, Dave?
Correct.
Okay. So, you go a different, yeah, you pull by and then come back around.
It'll be better.
Why are they worried about headlights? Headlights at that location? You mentioned that.
Yeah, we just don't want headlights projecting over, um, uh, uh, roads, streets, or into adjacent businesses, or especially, we're, we're really cautious about headlights spillage into residential areas, or possibly recreation areas.
Say, there's no residential area.
No, no, there is a rec area.
There is a residential area, so, yeah, got it.
Uh, planning and zoning, did you cover that?
Yes, thank you. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this, this request at their September 3rd meeting, and by a vote of five to zero, the commission recommended to approve, uh, the request.
All right, thank you. Okay. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving the amended PUDB site plan for Heartland Plaza Part 2, Correville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Do we have any other questions or discussion on this agenda item?
Uh, the only thing I'd point out, Mayor, is this, as was pointed out, the city engineering staff has been working on the roundabout, and they said that Costco has gone over and beyond coordinating all of this together, and that they're even going to pick up some of the work. It, that if we would have done that project individually, that we would have had to do. So, they've just been very complimentary of how, um, easy it has been to work with their staff, and how accommodating they've been.
We have to push them to finish that trail down to that trailhead?
That was just part of the
First, part of the original agreement was that when we did something like this, that they would take it down. So, when they, when they did the, uh, gas station expansion, they, the, the time under the original agreement, they came in, uh, with a ride, so.
Yeah. I mean, we have the, the driver's license station down there, which we talked about people having to walk down there, so this will make it a little bit better. That's great.
Awesome. All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next up, we have Forever Green Heights, Phase 3, Part 2. This will plat lot, this, this will plat lots, uh, I'm trying to read that. This will plat is, sorry.
This plat is, probably.
This, this plat is, yeah, I must, another typo. Uh, this plat is lots 1 through 55, that will have single-family detached homes, and will be an extension of, well, I don't know how to say that.
Two Sicky.
Two Sicky Drive, and three multifamily buildings on Lot 56. And Dave, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would add to that is that city staff has reviewed the final plat, and we find that it conforms with the approved preliminary plat, as well as the requirements for preparation and filing.
Okay. And the Community Development Report?
Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the request at their September 3rd meeting, and by a vote of five to zero, they recommended approval of the final plat.
Okay, thank you. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving the final plat of Forever Green Heights, Phase 3, Part 2, Correville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next up, we have updates to our building codes, and this ordinance will adopt the 2024 additions of several building codes, and this would also add some amendments to those. So, Dave, tell us about this.
Uh, yes, the, this agenda item, um, appears on one of your agendas about once every three years, which is the typical cycle that we review and update, uh, building codes. We've been using the International Family Code since, uh, the year 2000. They're amended throughout the years to reflect ba, best practices in terms of, um, updated technology, as well as, uh, when, uh, people in the building profession, um, are made aware of and, and implement better building practices, as well as anything involving life safety standards. So, this adoption includes local amendments similar to what we've had in the past. Um, these are similar to surrounding communities. It's one of the reasons why we usually wait about a year after these books are published, because we do like to work with our surrounding communities to make sure that we're all using similar, if not the same, amendments and, and codes. The code families include updated, uh, updates based on rising construction costs, uh, the increasing need for senior housing, as well as new technologies. And, uh, the commission, or I'm sorry, the, the city council has been provided amendments to the International Building Code. Uh, again, city staff has reviewed this. Um, our fire chief, Roy Schweitzer, is here, um, our assistant fire chief, Dick Pruder, as well as our building official, Charlie Myers, is here, if you have any questions, uh, on this. Uh, however, they poured through this extensively to make sure that, uh, these codes reflect, um, the intentions of the city. Staff does support these changes, and respectfully requests the city council adopt the building codes and amendments as proposed, and these building codes will take effect October 31st, 2025.
Thank you. Anything from P and Z?
Uh, no, not on this one.
Okay, great. All righty. Could I have the ordinance read, please?
Sure. Ordinance number 2025-1015, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance of the City of Correville 2, 2011, and is previously amended, adopting by reference the 2024 International Building Code, 2024 International Residential Code, 2024 International Fuel Fire Code, the 2024 International Existing Building Code, 2024 International Fuel Gas Code, 2024 International Pooh and Spa Code, the Iowa Mechanical Code, the Iowa Electrical Code, the Iowa Plumbing Code, and the Iowa Energy Conservation Code, all with amendments thereto. This ordinance introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or discussion?
You, you said something about the, these codes factoring in building costs? I thought you said something about cost. I wouldn't, can't imagine why that would have much to do with.
I think building costs is often a, a consideration in, in construction. Um, a, a lot of those considerations are, are done during the vetting process for these codes. Uh, with any international code council process, um, architects, uh, construction professionals, as well as code officials, are involved in input on that, and I think that's always a balance that's weighed between, um, uh, projected or, or anticipated benefits versus cost inputs.
Okay.
I was kind of fuzzy reading through all those codes.
There's thousands of pages, yes, yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Next up, we have an Engineering Services Agreement. The city intends to move the solid waste department staff and equipment and recycling drop-off to 750 Camp Cardinal Boulevard, which currently houses the Streets Department, Wastewater Department, and Wastewater Treatment Facility. All right, so, could I have that resolution read, please?
Resolution approving an Engineering Services Agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., to complete a facilities master plan for the Streets and Solid Waste Department. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion?
My daughter works for HDR, does that matter?
I, I don't think she had anything to do with this project.
She did not.
Okay, so no.
Okay, good enough. Could I have the roll call, then, please?
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Correville Youth Sports Park Project, Part 3. All right, this project is going to consist of two separate bid packages that will be let simultaneously. And I will have our Parks and Rec Director, Sherry Proud, talk about these two different bids.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just to review what these bids were over, the project was split into two bids after we rejected bidding back, um, in, I believe that was in May. Um, so bid package one includes grading, civil improvements, and utilities, and an alternate for bid package one includes a trail going from the Baseball Diamond through to Forever Green Road. Um, then bid package two included completion of a 350-foot baseball diamond and walkways immediately around that diamond, with an alternate for bid package two including a 250-foot diamond. So, it differed in that we, um, pulled some things out, um, to, to add as alternates, so that we could have that flexibility with these bids, as well as split these bids apart, so we knew exactly, um, which part of these bids might have been, um, causing, uh, the, the pricing to be so high last spring. So, we opened these bids on Tuesday, September 16th, at 2:00 PM, and for bid package one, we had five, um, bidders, and they ranged from $491,075.44, all the way up to $654,500.60. So, um, about $110,000 between those, those bids. Um, we would recommend award to our low bidder, Peterson Contractors, Inc., at $491,075.44, including base bid and alternate one. So, we'll take that trail through to Forever Green Road, and that will be a 10-foot trail. Um, we have worked with PCI on several projects, and Engineering also works with PCI, and we feel like we've had good outcomes with them, and feel really good about, um, them handling that project. Um, we only received one bid for bid package number two, and that was from Valentine Construction out of Dubuque, uh, at a cost of $847,314.05, um, right in line with where those, um, that, that estimate was, um, in the, uh, spring. So, we didn't come down in pricing there, and we were just a little bit over where, um, our consultants had us. But we, we did make some phone calls. We have not worked with Valentine Construction, but we reviewed what kinds of projects they are, have been involved in, who they're using for their subcontractors, which is really the big one there, um, is they will act as the, um, general, but will have subs that are pretty important, that, that it was important that we knew who they were, and, and, um, confident in their ability to execute a ball diamond. And so, we would award this base bid, we would reject alternate one of the second diamond, and we would award just base bid to Valentine Construction for that price of $847,314.05. Um, total project cost with, with all of our construction administration included is $1,586,689.49. Um, council approved up to 1.8 million for this project. So, once we get this underway, we feel really good about where we're at, hopefully have no cost overruns, no, no bad soils, things we need to correct. Um, we will have some, um, opportunities to look at the baseball diamond tunnels, um, that are included in that. We can also look at adding lighting to our fourplex, which will give us some flexibility and add some more diamond time, which was one of our big concerns with the number of user groups that are using the youth sports park, um, and also look at, at some other small projects there.
All right, very good. Thank you. Yes, it is. All right. So, let's start with the first resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and approving the contract for the Correville Youth Sports Park Project, Part 3, Bid Package Number 1. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion?
This is confusing to me. Are we getting both ball parks done?
No.
No, just one?
We're rejecting, yes, and that's in, in the-
So one of these is rejecting?
Bid package two.
Bid package two, okay. How much over would that have gotten us to 1.8 million? Why are we rejecting again?
It would be, we would be over. We were, we were at 1,779, I believe, and without any construction administration costs. And so we've, we've got a construction administration of $248,000 that we need to take into account. So we have to, and we have to build out the restrooms yet that are already roughed in in the, in the maintenance building.
So that's a future, we'll see.
We would love to have that diamond, but we want to stick to budget.
Yeah, okay, good time to stick to the budget.
Yes. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And could we have the next resolution read, please?
Resolution accepting and approving the contract and bond documents for Correrville Youth Sports Park Project, Part Three, Bid Package Number One. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this one? All right, roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Okay, and did you, you kind of wrapped this other bid report?
Sorry, I did.
No, that's good, that's good to know, that's good to know, then we can get right to the next resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and approving the contract for the Correrville Youth Sports Park Project, Part Three, Bid Package Number Two. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions? All right, roll call.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And last but not least, could we have the final resolution, please?
Resolution accepting and approving contract and bond documents for Correrville Youth Sport, Sports Park Project, Part Three, Bid Package Number Two. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this item? All right, roll call.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have an MOU, and this is for a physical fitness incentive that will award Correrville police officers who pass the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy Physical Fitness Test Standards for their specific age and other, and bracket, it would reward them eight hours of vacation. All right, could I have that resolution read, please?
Resolution approving memorandum of understanding between the Correrville Police Officers Association and the City of Correrville regarding physical fitness incentives for its members. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd just comment that it's obviously mandatory that you meet the physical fitness requirements the first time when you go through the academy, but beyond that, there is not. And this is just an incentive. We have some officers that are very dedicated to this, and so this would give them an incentive to continue to meet those requirements. They obviously change as you age and have been with us longer, but this gives them an incentive and benefit for continuing to keep themselves in shape. And it has long-term benefits for us as well, from a worker's compensation standpoint.
Gotcha, all right.
Probably health insurance.
Yep.
Standpoint, maybe harder to measure, but.
Excellent. All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And last but not least, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to T.
All right, moved by Quinn, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. All right, city administrators report.
Yeah, I'll just have one quick item. This last Sunday, there was an opportunity, an open house, to meet both city council candidates and school board candidates, and also the lost. And one of the interesting things that came up, one of the residents said that two of their relatives were not going to vote for lost because they were going to buy new cars, and they didn't want to pay extra. And so that's just one item that we, amongst the others, that's not included in lost. So just point that out to folks, there's a long list of things that lost does not apply to medical, rental, utilities, food, but cars, purchase of cars is also one of those. So it was just an interesting thing. They came and asked the question and learned, so, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mayor's report, I don't have a ton. I did just want to highlight a couple of things over the weekend. I did want to talk about the Iowa Mission of Mercy Free Dental Clinic that happened at the Hyatt over the weekend. I was, I was there the day they were setting it up. And I got to tell you, I had a hard time imagining what it would, what it would, what it would look like when we did the proclamation, and we heard folks, Dr. Vishal came, came here and talked about it. But it was, it was something, I, I'd never seen anything like that, and it is absolutely amazing. And I unfortunately was not feeling well on Saturday. I did want to go in and see how they had, how it was set up with the patients actually there. They were doing minor, I mean, you, you attended, Kelly. I mean, they were doing some, some serious dental work there. Orals, I know.
Root canals and denture.
Yep.
Right.
Were both two of the more sophisticated.
Yeah, among, among other things. And the other thing that was worth noting about that is that there were, they had people lining up for that in the middle of the night. I was there on Thursday afternoon to do the press conference and just to kind of see how everything was set up. And there was, there were already people lining up at like 2:00 in the afternoon on Thursday to get in. So I wanted to just say how awesome it was to see that, and that we were able to get that event in Correrville. How many people, did you ever hear a final number?
The estimate was 1,200, I believe.
Yeah.
They had 580 the first day that they processed, which was everybody in the line. I don't know about Saturday, whether they got everybody in line or not.
They, they did have to turn a couple people away.
But it was a massive, I mean, just-
I think they said that that was the largest number that they had ever been able to process.
Yep, yep. And I want to really give a shout out to the staff at the Hyatt, because, you know, that's an example of that space, and how well that space can work for a lot of different things. And like I said, I, I went in there and I was, all of these dental chairs just set, I mean, hundreds of them. It was really, really impressive. And so, awesome event, grateful we had it here, wanted to also thank the Hyatt and all of the volunteers that, that helped out as well. And I did want to just shout out the hydrocephalus walk on Saturday, the 20th. Unfortunately, I was not able, I was hoping to attend that, I was not able to, again, because I wasn't feeling well that day. But I know, I think High was there. Oh, great, I didn't know Lori was there too. But just wanted to thank the organizers for that event as well, you know, so sad, sad to miss it, for sure. And I will leave the community meal to you, because that was also a really great event that happened over the weekend. So thank you to everybody that helped make those, make those events, all of those things possible. City attorneys report?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Committee and council members report. Let's start down at dissent with Mike.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to thank everybody for the great discussion we had tonight.
Absolutely.
I guess, personally at least, I've complained at times about always being in unison and voting the same, and not having rigorous discussions about issues. So I won't be complaining about that again for quite a while. I would advocate, as I said earlier, for discussion further about, about our policy, which was approved, without really talking about some of the key details in terms of who we're sharing the data with and how long we're going to store that data, which it's, it's very clear to me are key to, to that policy. And, you know, there's a lot of general principles in there that are great, and I fully support, but, but the devil's in the detail sometimes. So I hope we can revisit that issue at some point.
Yes.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely, I agree, yeah, I, I absolutely agree. And I, I forgot to, to make those comments as well, you know, I, I do appreciate, I mean, it's, it's hard, it's not easy, it's not easy. It, it just, it just really, really, a lot of this stuff is, is tough stuff. And I, I know that, you know, challenging discussion, but I appreciate the fact that we, we, we had the discussion, and that we did, we did, you know, take the time to go back and, and look, and really make sure of what we were doing. And so I, I hear you, and I, I agree that I think we definitely need to go back and, and make some adjustments, so. I agree. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Rich, how about you?
Well, it sounds like I missed a, a lot of community events over the last two weeks, but I was on vacation, so. I won't apologize for vacation. I did miss also the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, but Sherry did tell me that there's a, help me out here, Sherry, but you have, at, on the, at the rec center, there's a diagram? Help me out.
At the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last Monday, which Rich is our liaison, we walked the actual footprint of the possible future recreation center and talked about the diamond leaving, and have a sign posted where the new front door will be, on the east side. So people can stop by and, and check that out. You'll, you'll go down by the pool and turn around and face east, and that's where it'll be located, so.
Thank you. Thanks for covering for me. The other thing I, I want to talk about is the, is the lost campaign. You know, Stacy and Sherry have been doing a great job. There is a supply of these yard signs. They're back here, I can set them out in front. And there's more down at the Convention Bureau's office. They should have some right inside the door. So anybody who wants them, pick one up, put them in your yard. So we just need to get the word out. Stacy and, and the committee have been doing, we've got a schedule of, of a lot of presentations that are, have already been done, but are also on the schedule to be done. We have another committee meeting tomorrow evening, and so efforts are moving forward for, for the Vote Yes campaign, so, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, what do you have?
I do appreciate the, a good, a good debate, exchange of ideas, it's very valuable in our society. And I do appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Now I'm done.
Okay. Go for it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just have one thing. I would like to say thank you to the staff of the Correrville Community Food Pantry, and the staff at the Correrville Public Library, and also all of the volunteer who made the community meal on Friday, September 19, Possible. I heard that they serve over 700 bowls of chili. I was not a part of this meal, because I am on sabbatical, so I can't claim credit for that. But community meal is one of the thing that we, you know, that's how we celebrate our community, that's how we bring people together. And kudo to the, the staff and, and everybody who come and enjoy in the meal. I get to laugh with a lot of people and eat some good food, so keep your eye out for the next meal. It will be on December, and it's going to be at the rec center. Thank you.
All right, thank you. 700 bowls of chili, that's incredible.
Oh, and I forgot about over 80's vaccine was-
Yes.
Yeah, was given.
Yes.
And it's all free.
Yep, yep, and honestly, I think that that is why I didn't feel well when you called me, and you're like, where are you? Because I had gotten both, the COVID and the, the flu shot, and it, I had, it gave me a reaction. So, but so glad that we were able to, to provide that, because there's a lot of confusion and concern about how people are going to access vaccines, so, that's awesome. All right.
Actually, I have one more thing.
Go for it.
There's a harm reduction vending machine at the Correrville Public Library, so it's have, what is it, Nexalon, it's have morning app to pill, it's have, you know, condom for both, for both sexes, it's have a gun lock, it's have post A kid, so there's a lot, and it's all free. And, and this is actually from the, the funding, that, that funding, this was from the lawsuit of the opioid, the opioid lawsuit. So please visit the public library and, and get the supply that you need.
And I was at that as well on-
Yeah, I missed that, sorry.
What day, what, God, what day was that?
Monday.
I was at, I went to the press conference for that as well, and I learned that they have already distributed 600 items out of that, out of that vending machine already. And it's, yeah, it's all free, there's no questions asked, and it's, you know, the, it's, it's a really, really great thing that we have, so. Awesome, yep. Royce?
Yeah, so, again, you know, great public comments and, and a lot of interaction, you know, really, really, really tough decision. Was, been weighing on me for a month, or better. But anyway. Been traveling a lot, I'm glad to be back in Iowa. My travels has made me appreciate where we live, in our community, and living here in the state of Iowa. I enjoyed going to Des Moines last week, to the League of Cities. Picked up on a lot, sat through a lot of sessions, got to do a tour of a few of the, the cities surrounding Des Moines, and, and some of their stuff that they're doing, you know, the ball diamond and walkie, just simply amazing. The natural park, in what city was that in again?
It was Urbandale.
Urbandale, yes, that was very cool. That, that is a Yukon or? Icon, Icon. Man, I'm telling you, it's getting late. Icon, right now just serves that area around Des Moines. I would really love to see that expand out into our community. I thought that was just simply amazing, and, and the way that it brings the community together with our natural resources, and, and helps us understand that better. I'm going to put a plug in real quick for my day job. There's a lot of construction work going on around the area, especially in the Cedar Rapids market. There's a big need for construction people, whether they're, have skills or not. There will be what we're calling a mobile combine on October 6th at Hawkeye Downs, starting at seven, or I guess the public will start registering at 8:30, and there's going to be 12 contractors onsite hiring onsite, so, giving the opportunity to get into a trade, so. I highly suggest if, if that's something you're interested, to attend. And if you have any questions, you can call the Iowa City Local, Local 1260 Carpenters, and they will give you more information. And that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Lori, last but not least.
Yeah, thank you, cool stuff going on. The United Way had their kickoff for this year, and Councilor Knutson and I attended that later this afternoon, and we just thank them for all the work that they do in the community. And also, on Monday, the Correrville Lunch Connections met out at the Tom Harkin Trailhead. And also, on Monday, the Corleville Lunch Connections met out at the Tom Harkin Trailhead. And I just want to thank Kelly and Sherri Proud for their organizing that, we got to hear about the trail system, both the Woodpecker Single Track Trail and the Creek, Creekside Flow Trail, Creekside Flow Trail. And also, of course, there's all the wonderful cement trails too, that I like to ride on. But what was really impressive to me is how it has brought together so many different community members and with different skills and gifts that they add to this great bike community that is growing and growing. And we heard from Alex Burmeyer, our Corleville Park Superintendent, and he, not only do they build the trails, but they also maintain them, which is really important, and they do a great job. And then Jim Conrad from President of West Bank, Joe Hughes, Vice President, Navigate Homes, they bike all year round. And Caleb Wilson represents Bike Iowa City, his day job is President of South Gate Development. And he and somebody else have a kids program that has over ninety kids in it, a team of mountain bikers. And then also Jake Belts, who is a Sales Manager of the Bike Division at Shields in Corleville, and that's where we bring all our bikes for big and small fixes. Jake and Shields does a great, great work for, for our community. And Sherri just said, we love showing off the trails and getting more people out there riding. And if you want more information, BikeIowaCity.com can show you a schedule where there's almost a bike event going on every day of the week. So that's BikeIowaCity.com, thanks.
All right, excellent. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
I don't know, moved by like three people, moved by Peterson, could I get a second? Okay, it's Mike's second, all in favor, please say aye. All right, we're adjourned, thank.